Whether to issue a ticket or not, and you're on the front line getting all the facts, talking to both sides, you know, and we, you know, we respect that, I mean, pure discretion. As far as animals running at large, I understand that maybe the, the dog was under the control because it was collared and leashed, was walking, but, you know, I don't know, I'm reading our, our ordinance anyway, and I think it, it mirrors the county ordinance, maybe not word for word, but it does say, it does say, "It shall be unlawful for the owner or keeper of any animal to permit the animal to run at large, run at large in any place within the town unless accompanied by and under the control of the owner or the keeper of said animal." I, you know, if it's off its leash, if it slips its collar, I think at that point-
It's not being controlled.
Running at large with all, would be my interpretation. But particularly if it's not under control, I mean, if your dog gets away and, and you can control it, like, get back here and sit, that'd be different. And as far as vicious animals, our ordinance is, well, you've seen the ordinances in the packet, you know, it's proof that the animal has bitten, scratched, attacked, or injured any person, shall constitute prima facie evidence that are showing that the animal is vicious, proof that the animal is wounded or worried, any horses, cows, sheep, lambs, or other animals, other animals, it seems to me would be, could include other dogs, why running at large off, off the premises owned or occupied by the owner is also prima facie evidence that the animal is vicious, that's right in our ordinances. And, and so everyone knows it's in ordinance one seventeen dash two, A is running at large, B is vicious animals. Other questions from the board?
Again, I'm just wondering-
We'll ask the neighbors if they want to speak to, but please stay here for now and so you can ask, sorry, ask questions.
I still think they should be able to go to the sheriff's department and ask that a citation be issued.
How is the citation?
I mean, this, this happened to my dog, a, a dog burst out of their screen door and ran out into the road, and my dog had eighteen stitches, double layered stitches, and that's a vicious dog. It's a vicious dog that does that.
Now, you've asked, and your neighbors with the petition asked that the dog be removed from the town, and you didn't ask the town board to issue a citation, you want the dog removed, do I understand that, removed from the town?
We would like it removed from the town.
I guess it's, it's one of those, if the dog's allowed to stay and has another attack, when is enough going to be enough, you know, or we're out with our dogs, or one of the other neighbors are out with their dogs and attacks them, and somebody takes force against it, now is that person liable, you know, we're just trying to do things as civilly as possible before things escalate and someone else is attacked, that's what our main goal is.
Right, we had heard that there were needed to be three incidences before something would legally, some type of legal action would happen with the dog, and as I'm hearing tonight, that that's possibly incorrect information, our neighborhood would hate to see this happen, you know, one time, two more times, three more times.
What upsets me is that most people take responsibility when their animal is at large or causes some kind of, some kind of thing, at least they come in and acknowledge the fact that, they apologize or make an offer of restitution. With somebody who has no history of doing this, it's more upsetting to me because it shows an indifference to the, to the neighborhood and to the people and to the other animals that are allowed to, or are available to walk around in the, in the area. I know that this is a town with a lot of dogs, I own a dog, there's a lot of dogs in our neighborhood, and most people are respectful of other people and their animal, they don't get them into a position where they cause harm or danger to, where you're scared to walk your dog. I, I think we need to pursue this and find out exactly what our ramifications are, what we can do to, to rectify this situation with, with something like this. People should be allowed to at, at least walk in their neighborhood without being fearful of being attacked. I know it's, it's horrible to have a dog come at you, I've been bitten by an animal, and it's terrifying, and it, it creates an area of distrust, and you just don't, you don't feel comfortable being outside with, with your animal. So, I think we should do everything in our power to see if we can help these people and, and, and rectify this situation, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, thank you, we'll hear from the neighbors too in a moment. And, you know, my sense is, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, issuing a ticket to this person is not going to solve what you're asking for, is not the remedy you're asking for, you're asking to get the dog be removed.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that I would have expected to happen, just from living in other counties, I just feel like other incidences that I've heard of, the dog's either been taken to be quarantined, has been put down, or the owner was cited, and none of those things happened, and, like I said, this was, you know, an unprovoked attack, there's nothing to say that this wouldn't happen again. I have two large sixty pound dogs and myself walking, and I would have never thought that this would happen to me, so, there are kids running in our neighborhood to a friend's house, or if a dog's outside in its own yard, minding its own business, this can happen again and again, and I want to be part of the help that stops that from happening to somebody else.
I think a citation would be sufficient if they cared, but in my own opinion, I don't feel like they care because they never reached out to anyone in the neighborhood that's ever had any issues.
There was no remorse, there was no apology, had my neighbors not been there to get her, their information, I would have never known who, who this was, or I just wouldn't have gotten as far as I did without my neighbor's help, so.
Did you ever think about suing them?
Um, we've talked about hiring an attorney, you know, at one point we did hear that Ms. Hoff was, she did have a restraining order against her from a family member, and so we believed at one point that she wasn't supposed to even be in the home at that point, and then, you know, after looking into it, we heard that that restraining order was lifted, we've looked into different options, this is where we're starting, if it doesn't go further than here, we've talked about contacting a lawyer and talking about, I've contacted my insurance to find out what my homeowner's insurance can do, and this is, this is the first step.
I guess it's, it's more of a principle thing than it is the monetary value of what happened, don't get me wrong, bills are not cheap by any means, but, but, yeah, but for me, it's, it's flat out the principle of it.
Okay, she didn't ask, she didn't offer to pay any of your bills, did you ask her?
I've never spoken with her, sir.
No, you didn't, okay.
So the bills were never sent to the Hoffs?
No, this is where we've started.
Okay.
I'm sorry to have to go through all of this with you, I know it's dramatic, but-
It's okay.
We're just trying to, you know, understand all the facts and circumstances, because trying to get the dog removed, we will have to go to court to do it, so. Any further questions, and then I'll ask if any of the neighbors would like to make a statement? Do you have anything, do you have anything further to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any of the neighbors would, if they would like to come up and state their name and their address, and they have a statement or additional information they'd like to provide?
All right, good evening, my name is Andre Blakart, live on Highland Drive, here with my wife, Kristy Blakart, we happen to be the neighbors that rolled up on the scene coming home from work on the corner of Sherry and Highland at a little before five P M, and we noticed, hey, we know that's our neighbor sat on the ground, so we parked the car, another neighbor had rushed over, thankfully, he heard JoJo screaming, rushed over from about a hundred yards away, just east on Sherry, he'd been out in his yard, and he pretty much saved, he stopped the attack, it sounds like, he stopped everything, and when we got there, the dog was circling around the car, he was loading Amanda's wheelchair into the minivan, who, her mom had just, just happened to be driving by, Amanda's mom, I don't know if that was coincidence or whatnot. So we, we got JoJo out of the road, and it started raining a little bit, her dogs are kind of frazzled, she was very frazzled, and I'm coming here tonight because I, I never want to have to see somebody go through that, and I don't want any of my neighbors have to go through that, to show up on the scene with such chaos going on, it's totally preventable. When she, when Amanda rolls out of her front door, she's right off the bat not capable of keeping this dog under control, it's quite obvious. It's a German Shepherd, I've been a lifelong dog owner, have two dogs now, had a German Shepherd, it's not the breed, it's the handler, so, right off the bat, she cannot control the dog, it's just pretty obvious. I don't think people should have to walk around like the mailman with mace in her pocket or pepper spray or O C spray, because they're in their own neighborhood, walking the dog, and they're worried about getting attacked, like several other people and dogs, animals, and they wouldn't want to see somebody's kid get, be the next victim, so, at what point is enough enough? I would say that her actions and inactions meet the criteria for, I guess the terminology for, she's unable to, unable to maintain control, contain, maintain control of the animal, and has no desire to maintain control, she didn't, didn't provide any relief during the incident that I was, rolled up on. I had some notes here, so yeah, she's, I would say right from the get-go, she's not able to maintain control. It's possible that this dog was picked up two, three days later as a at-large dog about quarter mile away on Sunset, Sunset View with the Big Ben section. I would imagine that dog that was listed on the Hoffs' website, it can be verified, yes or no, that that dog was released to Amanda if it was her dog or her family. I'd also like to wonder what new information you have today, and, and since the complaint was filed, or petition in December, what you can share with us, and what the options are, and at what point is maybe the town liable for, for the next incident, which is just a matter of time, since it's been made aware now of the situation and it's still a threat, so. My wife was the one who helped get Amanda's information, and she did mention that she may be, to the mother, she may be liable for the bills for, you know, the vet and for, for JoJo, and the mom said, oh, I'm not paying that, Amanda's going to have to deal with that, or something towards, towards there was that line, so, they have no regard for other people, it's pretty obvious, so, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other neighbor or other public comments? Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, did the board have any questions for, okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Brenda Jones, I live on Sunset View Drive directly across from the Hoff residence. I too was home the day that Joel was attacked, heard the screams from down the road, and did go to the scene and saw who was there. I helped put the information together, that's in your packet tonight, initially, we thought that it would be taken care of with the report to the Waukesha Sheriff's Department, so part of the delay was the fact that we, they were trying to make progress through the Waukesha Sheriff and through Hoffs, and then they were not getting anywhere. So I helped put the information together, helped collect the documents, I can tell you that I am, I observe that house quite often because my house faces that direction. I see Amanda take that dog out anytime, day or night, I've taken my dog out at three in the morning only to be surprised by her dog barking at mine from the road at three in the morning, where it's dark, there's no lights, I can't even see that it's out there. My children, who are elementary school and middle school, are afraid to be outside when that dog is out now, and when we see her go out for a walk, they immediately pull our dog in the house, we can't let, we can't enjoy our own area because of this animal. She has complete disregard for anyone else, you often go down the road and, when you're coming home at night, like in the wintertime when it's dark, you will come, come down the road and you will see her in the road, walking the dog, not always over to the side, sometimes down the middle, once in a while she'll have reflectors, very rarely she has reflectors, and you come up upon them in the dark, so you don't know she's even out there a lot of times. I've seen her sit at the bus stops, or, or head out of the driveway, taking the dog for a walk at the exact same time the children are going to the bus stops at eight A M. in the morning, I've watched her do this more than once, and even in the afternoon when the kids are coming home from school, she's, she's been so bold to sit at the stop sign, at the stop right by the corner of our house, with the dog while these young girls are getting off the bus at two thirty in the afternoon.
In her wheelchair?
In her wheelchair, yes. Now, Amanda does, is able to stand, she has used a walker in the past, I believe, if I'm understanding correctly from the parents, conversations I've had with the parents in the past, I believe she uses the wheelchair so she doesn't fall if she has a seizure or other incidents, although I heard that she got her driver's license back today, so she must be sufficient to drive. So, this, you know, our street, Sunset View Drive, is a cross street between Sherry and Artesian, and a lot of, we have a lot of walkers that come through there, pets, with their pets, with their children, back and forth, a lot of them come to the stop sign by our house, turn around and go back down the road because they live down just on the road. This past summer, fewer and fewer people have come by, many of them are going different directions because they won't come past our house. When I saw Joel walking her dog that day, I thought she knew who Amanda was, and that if she saw her, she would go the other way, she didn't know who Amanda was, any of the people in the neighborhood do, so if they see her, they turn around and try and go a different direction. But we shouldn't have to hold the whole neighborhood hostage for one dog, we should not be, we should be able to enjoy our own properties, I have observed that dog more than once loose, even coming cross onto my yard, across the street, going into the neighbor's yard, Jean Parr, who was noted in this document with two of the incidents, she lives exactly next door, across, across from me, but next door to the Hoffs', her dogs were attacked in her yard, she was not able to be here tonight because she had to work late, otherwise she would have been at the meeting, and I'm sure she would gladly answer any questions if you reached out to her regarding this. They too were frustrated, they were trying to work with Hoffs and getting nowhere, and not realizing we had maybe come to the town board to talk about this. So I just want to make sure you understand that the delay in getting the documents here was because of the confusion, but also because we want to make sure we had all the information together so that we could bring it here into a complete document when we brought it. If there's any questions, I can answer them, I don't really have anything else.
Question?
You just commented that the dog would be running around, okay, how do they get the dog back?
So, sometimes they'll, they'll put it on a tie-out in the backyard, sometimes-
I'm sorry, Anna.
Sometimes they put it on a tie-out in the backyard, but other times Amanda has let it loose in the yard. I don't know if the dog responds to her when they call it, or if they have to go and try to pick it up, I'm not really sure, I've not actually seen them actually go retrieve the dog. So I, I, I don't know, I do know it's been loose before.
Going back to when the dog was assaulting the other two dogs, okay, how did they get that dog back or out of the situation?
So I wasn't there, were you?
Your question to you, or maybe it's the owners, I'm not sure.
The neighbor, first neighbor. Mr. and Mrs. Parr, I believe, actually used a garden-
At the Parr house, or when the, when it attacked the, when it attacked Joel's dogs, or when it attacked, when, how did they get it into the van?
So, neighbor Dave, who couldn't be here as well tonight, he came running, and like Andre said, the dog was circling us, it was circling the car until it finally got forced into the vehicle, I actually didn't know the name of the animal until days later because I never heard Ms. Hoff call the dog off of me at all. It's not on a shock collar, it's not on a harness, they just finally were able to finally get the dog into the open minivan, so it took, for what me felt like a million years, it probably took ten minutes to get the dog off of us and into a vehicle.
Not expecting that you would know, but, maybe it's here in the paper, or I have, but do you have any idea how old this dog is?
The dog is not, it, it's probably only about three years old, I think, I remember when she first got it as a puppy, so it hasn't been that long, so if it's not licensed for the last couple of years, it's probably not much beyond, it could be four years, but-
That's right.
It's not, it's not very old, and it seems to have gotten more aggressive as it got older, I think it's the lack of training. That's my opinion.
Right, the Hoffs' report has the dog at two and a half years in July of 2019, and it's sixty pounds back then.
Yeah, it's, it's a good size, it's a good sized shepherd.
And shepherds grow, and grow, and they grow way past puppy in two and a half years.
Has the sheriff's department or Hoffs seen all the documentation of the boys, seen all the bikes, and-
I did send the Waukesha humane officer all of my information, I gave her access to all of my metal coworkers and bills and pictures of my dog's bikes that were viewed by our veterinarians, so they do have a clue of it, and I believe for the PARRs as well, but I can't confirm for sure.
Okay. But the sheriff's department, you guys have seen all of it, have you seen the pictures of all the bikes?
No, I'm, I'm only aware of the one with her, because I took that report, the other times the dog's been on leash, I, you guys called the police, the sheriff's department? Because a dog that's outside of its house running around, that's blatant dog offense, that's a dog at large, one hundred percent dog at large.
Yes.
But never under any control.
Both times Jean contacted the Waukesha County Sheriff's.
Okay, I can find out about the distribution of that, how that was, that dog that was recovered on, off of Sunset was not Amanda's dog.
Okay.
We were concerned about that because I put the dog, I read the quarantine to Amanda that night, and they went and checked that that was not Amanda's dog, that was not a German Shepherd from the area that got loose, or it was a Shepherd mix that got loose. But I know for a fact that that wasn't Amanda's dog during that, the day, directly after that fight, and I had personal vested interest in that, to make sure that that dog, that explains Amanda ten times how that dog had to go outside, and I told Amanda that she was in a vested interest to have her dad take the dog outside, because the dog had to be under leash to go about, to, to relieve itself, it couldn't just open the door and tell it to go back, it had to be under leash the entire time, and it could only go out there, relieve itself, and have to come back in. So when I found out that that dog was running that day, because I was actually working, we actually found out it was not Amanda's dog, it was a different dog.
On October twenty seventh, it did run into the PARRs' neighbor, into their neighbor yard, and also on, on July nineteenth, is what Jean had informed us of, and she told me and confirmed for me when I put the documents together that it went to the Waukesha County Sheriff is who she contacted, and I did actually observe both times the Waukesha County Sheriff over there talking to her, and she came and told me afterwards to make sure I watched out for the dog because of what had happened.
I knew Amanda was trying to get rid of that dog at one time.
Yeah.
Excuse me, who was trying to get rid of the dog?
Amanda was trying to get rid of the dog at one time, she was making, trying to make arrangements to have somebody move the dog, I remember hearing that, she was at one time, and the dog was supposed to be a service dog at first, as when our, we first started dealing with Amanda with the dog, she explained it to us as it was her service dog.
Yeah, she, if you look up the rules on service dogs, she was trying to tell me that when the puppy was only, was less than six months old, and a service dog cannot be licensed as a service dog until it's had more than a year of training, because a service dog has special requirements, I, I know this from working with housing where I work, service dogs have very specific requirements and specific training and certifications, and that, she was trying to tell me when the puppy wasn't even six months old that that's what it was, and it was not.
Oh yeah, we established that, that was more, at that time, more of a comfort dog, at that time, not a service dog, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not.
It wasn't going to be recognized as a service dog.
Is the dog still on a premise, on her, is she still-
Yes.
The owner of the dog, do you still see it?
Yes, oh yes, and Amanda, Amanda, so Amanda's living with her parents, her parents' house is what's across the street, and that's where she's staying. She was gone for a short period of time when she was, they, they mentioned the restraining order with the battery, charges and criminal property, if you look on C cap, you can look that up, she was gone for a period of time out of the house for that, but then her dad let her back in, so, we had about a brief month, month and a half, but I can only give you hearsay stories through what I was told about where she was and why she returned.
Right, and we do have incident, we did receive incident reports for, from the Waukesha Sheriff, for July nineteenth, twenty eighteen, that's Mrs. Parr's, and you, it's in the letter that they wrote, and also their incident, October tenth, twenty nineteen, there is also a, that's your report, so we've got that, we didn't, I don't believe we, we received one for the second Parr report on October twenty seventh, or-
Jill, I believe there's something from the humane officer?
Yeah, there is something from the humane officer.
It's from Andrea Gonzalez, or Jill is working for her now, or, but we do have that report.
Right, we do have information from, there's a question about what information we've received, those two incident reports from the sheriff, the main officer also sent over the quarantine order from October tenth, which, which is your, your incident, when the dog had to be quarantined for ten days, it's not, thank you for clarifying that that wasn't their dog, that's pretty egregious if, if they're under a quarantine order and the dog is now loose.
Oh yes, like, that's why I took a vested, vested interest in that dog, but we did find out that it was not, when I said not her dog.
Right, and then we have other incident reports from Hoffs dated July twenty seventh, not in the town of Vernon, but in the city of Waukesha, where the dog was picked up, and it was also impounded for a while.
Yes.
The dog for, for abuse.
Okay.
The dog was abused.
Okay, and I believe that to be the case, because if you read Joel's count of her incident, she began really hitting the dog with the leash, and that's when it backed out of the collar. The, the incident in Waukesha, that is where she was during that period of time when she was not allowed in the house, she was in Meskigo for a brief time, but then had, I think there was an incident there, and then ended up in Waukesha. The, the part that we're struggling with is the blatant disregard for the neighborhood, for the neighbor's safety, I, I have another neighbor who had a Shepherd until it passed away recently, for about eight years, that dog too was very protective of the home, they couldn't trust it to go out by other people unless they were with it and had it properly controlled, they walked that dog every day, they had the dog out on a leash, we never had any problems after the very first time they realized what was the case, they properly controlled their dog. The Hoff dog is not properly controlled, they don't have any regard for the neighborhood, the neighbors, or any of the damage that the dog has done, and this is just another accident waiting to happen.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Jones, is there any other neighbors or others that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'll keep it brief. My name is Elizabeth Watry, I live on Sunset View Drive, I live two doors down from the Hoff residence on the same side of the street, and I'd like to say that I've witnessed her hitting the dog when she's been walking him, I have-
I'm sorry, you've seen her-
Hitting the dog, like with a stick, or, you know, yelling at it, the dog, you know, when, when we would, before we knew of, before the attacks happened to Jo's dogs and herself, and the PARRs' attacks, when we would walk our dog, or my kids would go for walks, her dog would lunge at us and bark viciously, or even just driving, the dog would like want to attack our car and bark at our car, and then we heard of those attacks, and now my kids don't walk or go for runs, I have two teenagers, they used to run all the time, my daughter got a scooter for Christmas last, the year before last, she hasn't ridden it since then because of these incidents. The bus, I take my kids, my youngest daughter to school now because- The bus, I take my kids, my youngest daughter to school now, because I can't, I can't go to the bus stop with her, because as Brenda said, there's been incidents where we walk to the bus stop and she's sitting there or at the end of her driveway with the dog. And I certainly can't bring my dog out, because I have to worry that the same thing will happen as has happened to others in the neighborhood. And I guess the thing is also, I don't think, as she doesn't care for other safety, I don't think she cares for the safety of herself either, which is just sad in itself. My daughter works and she comes home late at night, and she has nearly hit her down the middle of Cherry, which is busier, you know, at midnight. She'll be walking down Cherry with no light, no reflectors, walking down the middle of the road with, with her dog. With her, well, okay, wheelchair, rolling, rolling down. So, you know, I just, I just want my kids to be able to be back outside. I want to be able to walk my dog again. And I guess I'm kind of thankful it's winter right now and we kind of, you know, can be inside. But come spring, summer, I want to be able to back out, be back outside and enjoy our neighborhood and our yard. And I let my dog in our yard, and I can hear him on his leash, Amanda's dog. And sometimes he's out for hours barking on his leash in their yard. I have seen him off leash before. But I don't have the view that Brenda has straight across the street, since we're a little bit down the road. But yeah, I just, I just want our neighborhood to be safe and all of us to be able to enjoy what we have.
Okay, questions? Okay, thank you. Any other neighbors? Sure.
I apologize. Not to hold everybody up, first of all, I wanted to thank the sheriff for coming. I was not at home that day. Having everybody around is a blessing, because I'm gone for extended periods of time sometimes. I just want to be clear though, that this isn't anything against shepherds. We love dogs. I wanted shepherds before. I met my wife, we had Goldens. Our next door neighbor has three shepherds, and our dogs have no problems with them. Our dog's going to their yards, their dog comes in our yard sometimes, you know, and, and there's no issues ever with that. As was stated before, I think it's more of a handler than it is by all means a breed thing. So I'd, I'd hate to see no shepherd or no certain breed dog thing come of this, because I don't think that's the issue that I see or I think our neighborhood sees in general. So I, you know, lastly, thank you for your time. Thanks for letting us come and speak a little bit, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? We need to figure out how best to proceed. Ideally, Amanda Hoff should, if she would relinquish ownership of the dog to Hawes, that would solve the issue in the most efficient, quick, quickest possible manner. I don't know if Hawes has requested her to do that, although with their reports, they might have. And especially in the July incident, when the dog was being abused. And I think there was comments to that regard that Mrs. Hoff may, may have tried to, you know, give up, give up ownership of the dog on a voluntary basis. That would be helpful. What, what I find probably most disturbing is maybe not the dog's behavior, but the owner's behavior, particularly with respect to the school bus stops in the morning and at night, completely uncalled for. So, ticket wise, tickets, you know, I, I, you know, you could, we could, we could authorize, town board could authorize tickets. And I think the town board has done that in the past. I, Supervisor Wiley, I think you were on the board when those tickets were issued about a year ago, actually. There were some tickets issued, and then two year, two years ago before that. So that, that is a, that is an alternative for the town board. And the sheriff's office said they will issue those tickets. Whether the tickets work, that is, it's not going to remove the dog from the neighborhood. And if it doesn't change the behavior of the owner, it's not the dog's, the dog's behavior is what the dog's behavior is. It's the owner of the keeper or the owner of the dog that, that keeping the dog under control is most of the issue, it sounds to me, without, you know, the owner's not here, so we're hearing one side of it. Unfortunately, I would have liked to hear from Mrs. Pahr, because she's, or Ms. Pahr, because she's been, had two of the incidents. But we've heard at least her neighbors recount those stories. Obviously, this is not a court of law or, you know, taking evidence here. So that's one thing is, is tickets. The other is if we, you know, declare, declare the dog vicious under our ordinances, we have to go get a judgment. I think the attorney, when Clerk Treasor and I were on the attorney's call, he did mention that, that, you know, he does recommend that no action be taken against the dog without a court order. What he means by that, against the dog, that is to get the dog removed, as opposed to tickets. Which are, which are tickets issued to the owner, not to the dog. And I think our statute does at least contemplate that we get a judgment. So a judgment, you know, would, would necessitate drafting a, you know, summons and complaint, legal fees, and filing it in Waukesha County Circuit Court. That's certainly examples. We've issued citations before, and again, whether that solves the, you know, the ultimate issue here is hard to say without doing it. You know, the other things is, I suppose, if we, if we ask Hawes to, you know, see if they can convince the owner to voluntarily give up her dog, but that may not work either. But that is a alternative. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm just making suggestions here, you know, not to say what would work. The only thing that, to remove the dog that would work is you'd have to file a lawsuit and then convince the judge to order it, so. And, you know, when you go to court, as everyone knows, maybe the judge believes you, or maybe not. I mean, we do. Oh, yes, sir.
If the dog is at large for the day, if the dog is at large and I can get to it, I can have the dog do it. I can call Hawes and have them snare the dog and take the dog away. I'm not going to go up to the dog and do this. I don't have a snare. But if the dog is at large, if he leaves the property, and he's down the road, and like that, and I can get the dog contained, Hawes will take that dog away and take it to Hawes, where Amanda will have to go back to Hawes. With that, we're generating a paper trail. No, the dog's off his leash, it's going to get taken, dog at large, dog's running around the neighborhood, that's not good. And Hawes has documentation, every time Hawes has to come out to get the dog. I mean, that's, I think that, if you see the dog, if you see the dog at large, give us a call. We'll come out, we, we're going to come out there. Let us try to get the dog, and we're back to Hawes. What, perhaps, you know, that's creating a more paper trail, a better case, versus, you know, not, not calling us. I'll take care of the bus now, so I'm going to get with you guys after this. I'm going to find out what time the buses drop off there. And I'm having the sheriff's deputy is going to be there at least for a while. Let her know that the dog's not going to the bus stop. So that's, we can make that happen.
I don't think she's outside as often in the wintertime as she is this summer, but she is outside.
If it starts up, we can just give us a call, and we can, we can make that happen. Every one of us that are assigned on her and have been on her as long as we have, we all know Amanda. If the dog gets off its leash, is down the street, leaves his property, give us a call. Let us get an opportunity to get it out, take it away. If it's going to Hawes, it's good. If I get it back in my squad car, we'll drive it to Hawes ourselves. We can lock it up. If it doesn't want to get our squad car to run, we have K nine handlers who have snares, and we'll, we'll get the dog contained. And we'll get, we'll take the dog, not back to Amanda's house. Let me take it to Hawes, where Amanda will have to go and pick it up.
And that, that's great, but that's the assumption that she won't get to it before someone gets there.
That's, that's true.
Which in the case of PARS, they're directly next door. So there wouldn't have not been enough response time in there. She did report the sheriff was there, but there was, you know, she wouldn't have been able to get them there quick enough.
And like myself, who was walking my dogs, I didn't have my cellphone on me at the time to have been able to call nine one one, which, shame on me for not having my cellphone, but it was my time to unplug and be outdoors with my animals at the time. But, you know, I appreciate the concern of, you know, being able to call the sheriff's department if we do see it at large. However, if this does happen again, where it does attack another animal or person, what happens then at this point?
Sheriff, if they are to call, do they call nine one one? If they're calling because of the dog, you're loose?
Uh, no. That's a non-emergency number. That would be, that would be the four four six five zero seven zero. If, if the dog's attacking another dog, then.
That's a nine one one, right.
Then you call that one. That's, that raises up to emergency.
Okay. Just thinking of trying to expedite the phone call, okay, as to what number they should be calling.
It's a non-emergency number for, for dog at large, or the dog, if the dog's barking at night, we can, that can be taken into it other than the noise ordinance. If it's disturbing you, that's, that's all I need, is that you want to be complaining that that dog actively barks and disturbs your peace, that's all I need. We start writing tickets, left and right.
And, and that would go for Amanda at the bus stop with her dog? You could probably call the non-emergency, and if you're in the area, you'd swing by.
Oh yeah, yeah. I believe that some, one of the neighbors did call it in last year or week. Yeah, we were aware of that at one time, that Amanda's dog was seen as a dog. Plus, I believe in the forty nine, that time.
I know, I know it's kind of insignificant in regard to the animal, but can we send a letter? If you could verify that the dog is not licensed to her and indicate that the dog has to be licensed, that's just another.
I can do whatever the town board directs me to do.
Right, okay. Well, I think you have a sympathetic board. We're just, I'm struggling, I'm thinking, struggling with how best to proceed. I think the ultimate goal is, is to, Ms. Hoff doesn't, from what we've heard, now maybe, and we haven't heard her side of the story, but shouldn't, shouldn't be owning the. She was invited, yes, we did send her a letter, telling her about this meeting. You know, it's, if she's not a good dog owner, she shouldn't own dogs. And how best to make that happen?
I think she should get some tickets, some citations.
Start the paper trail.
Start that.
Yeah, start the paper trail, send her a letter.
The only thing I wanted to ask the board is, typically when a dog's at large or those issues, they get the, the beginning hundred dollar fine plus all the court costs, which add up. But we had a horrible attack last year, and the minimum fine on that one was three hundred and fifty dollars plus all the cost. But that was a really, really bad, not, not near area, but a bad dog bite to a dog and human being also. So what the sheriff typically does is writes the citations, and then based upon what, when they're, when they're something that's a little bit more than a dog at large, I usually always bring it to the town board to have them delineate what level of fee, because there's a range on the first offense from one hundred to a thousand just for the fee, and then all the court costs are compounded on. I just wanted to state that, so the board knew that.
Right, right, and on that particular, this was back in April of twenty nineteen. They received a hundred dollar ticket for unlicensed dog and three hundred and fifty dollars for vicious animal. Ticket.
They did receive that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was that?
That was a severe one.
That was a severe one?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then they paid them?
Oh yes, yes, they went, yep.
That's not this dog, though.
No, no, it's not.
No, it is not. That's a different.
Why don't we, why don't we proceed in that direction? Yeah.
Yeah, you would write the citation.
That at least gets her attention. She may not pay it, but at least she'll have it outstanding against her, you know. And get, get her aware of that, you know, there's a, there's a situation that.
You can write a citation based on that incident?
Write a citation based on the fact that the dog's not licensed today at the town. But I can write them, just for like abandoned property, if you guys want me to write a ticket every week. I'll write a ticket every week if you give her, I can do whatever you guys want me to do. I think you guys are getting clean. But yeah, if the dog's not licensed, and the town wants me to write a ticket every week until it's done, I can, I'm not, no problem.
Well, it's, and, and we do have proof, evidence, solid evidence that the dog is unlicensed. It's unlicensed. Either licensed or not. We don't have record of it. It's unlicensed.
Right.
So a citation, it seems to me, should be able to stick on that, and that's typically what, a hundred dollars?
And Hawes will not release it?
If the sheriff's department does pick up the dog and brings it to Hawes, Hawes will not release an animal unless there is a license issued.
And how did it get released after, oh, it was?
It's a different, it's different if it's quarantined. That's a whole different animal.
Right, that's different. It's quarantined at home. And then, and then it seems to me we have, Mrs. Pahr's in here, so I'd be, I'm a little reluctant to issue tickets based on, you know, neighbor, neighbors reciting what Mrs. Pahr is, you know, would have said had she been here. But we do have people here, yes, that dogs were attacked, there was vet bills, you, you were bitten in the finger. So, you know, those, that, that could be something that we could issue a ticket to.
I believe Mrs. Pahr's bills are in there also, because she provided those to me.
Yep, okay. So what do you think, Board? Mr. Supervisor Wiley?
I think she should be issued a citation for, based on the citations that were issued by the sheriff's department, and also the fact that the dog's unlicensed.
So, a citation for an unlicensed dog?
Yeah, and an animal at large, or a vicious animal.
I think for a vicious animal.
It bit a couple of people. Yeah, and it bit some, I mean, I think it's just a case of a mistreated animal who's not being able to be handled by its owner. I think it's been said.
I think it's been said that the dog is more untrained, okay, and they don't know how to handle it. And that's what's creating the problem. Because shepherds, as one of the gentlemen has mentioned, is a pretty responsive dog once it knows what the rules and boundaries are. So I think all the things that you mentioned, Gary.
Biting dog bites.
Should be done. Should be done.
So if I understand it, Supervisor Wiley, Supervisor Mahalik, unless you would like tickets issued for unlicensed dog, vicious animal, and an animal at large, all relating to, I mean, the ticket's got to relate to an incident.
If the dog, dog license can.
Dog license can be today.
Be today, like I said, we can do it.
The other, a vicious animal and the animal at large has to be tied to something. I mean, I mean, you investigated it.
I can backdate it.
You can backdate it to October.
The town attorney's not going to.
Right.
No, we have to do that in other.
In the other cases too, I think that had to, right, so that would be, would be the October tenth day, it seems to me. Supervisor, that, Mahalik, do you have anything further to?
I was just saying, what a mess.
Supervisor Dashick.
When it happened in my household, the sheriff delivered our bill to the people and they paid it.
That's a civil matter, we don't get involved. I explained that to the young lady, and I explained that to Amanda, and Amanda was being, and Amanda's dad were made aware. That's why we asked for the homeowners policy on that porch. That's why that's on that porch. Who is very responsible, and I explained it is a civil matter. It was not criminal. The dog was not sickbound, you know, nobody gave the command to attack you.
Right. Well, when I was attacked by a dog, I had to get, not the town of Vernon, the town of Watford, I had to, I called the police. That was reported. The dog was quarantined. The owner broke the quarantine. I called the police. The do, police then convinced the owner to give up the dog, and they took the dog for the quarantine, and then they delivered it to Hoss. That was Racine County. So, that dog was removed. Then I had to sue the person. They didn't produce the rabies reports and homeowner's insurance, so I ended up suing them. And, you know, you don't have, and the homeowner's insurance was canceled, your mortgage is in default, you lose your house, and that's what happened.
Karen, I see that you had sent a letter, okay, to Mrs. Hoff. Did, did you ever get a response from her at all on that?
No, it was sent, uh, regular mail and certified. I had no response.
Certified mail, but no, no responses come back?
Yeah, I sent it regular mail and certified, and no response, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to issue, uh, tickets or requ, is it an issuance of tickets from town board? Or is it, uh, from the town, or, or a...
You just ask.
Ask the, uh, deputy to...
Usually writes the cite, what the deputy does is, writes the citation. He doesn't put the amount and just writes the, the particular code in which he's, um, writing the citation for, brings it to the town. We do our part, you know, and, and, and like I said, if, if you feel you want to set an amount now, and then it's, then it's sent to the courts and the sheriffs and the, uh, it's sent to all parties. And there's a court date, and...
So, are we looking for a motion to, what, issue citations to Amanda Hoff for an unlicensed dog? Dog at large and a vicious... Vicious, let me just see what the ordinance says, exactly. Yeah, so, uh, and a vicious animal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
And then, as, uh, discussion, I, so then if we, if that motion passes...
What will happen is, is the deputy will write the citations, bring them to the town hall, and the only thing is, I just need to know for the dog at large and the unlicensed dog, that's, that's, but, you know, on the vicious dog.
The, the, uh...
It'd be a hundred dollars on the unlicensed, a hundred dollars...
Bond schedule, right?
Yeah, a hundred on the vicious, a hundred on the dog at large, a hundred for an unlicensed dog. And then you would tell me what you feel, the, the starting point on a vicious dog is a hundred dollars. So, right now, it's three hundred dollars if you do a hundred on the vicious dog, plus all the court costs.
Right, so, we should probably pass the motion first, and then we'll have another, uh, motion to, um, establish the, the, uh, the bond, the amount, the amount of, of each ticket.
As part of discussion, uh, the information that they've so convincingly provided regarding the pictures of the, this goes to the vicious dog, uh, the photos and everything else, would that be a part of the record?
Oh, absolutely. What I, what I would give to our municipal attorney is every bit of information that the residents provided, what the sheriff's department provided, what Hoss provided, we have a whole paper trail, and everything's given to the attorney in the event the attorney has to go to court.
Thank you.
Right, because we may have to go to court to defend the tickets, or to pro, sorry, to prosecute the tickets. Okay, so we have...
The attorney will be, the attorney will be there if the person doesn't pay the fine, pre, prepay the fine. The attorney will be there, no matter what. Even if the person doesn't show up and is in, you know, in default, the attorney will be there to defend the town, okay?
Right, and I know, last time Supervisor Wildy, remember?
Right.
The, the board was, I'm not sure what the right word was, about the, the attorney costs involved.
Yeah, yeah.
But you have to, if you're going to issue tickets, you have to go prosecute them.
Right.
You have to. I mean, the sheriff is not going to be writing tickets without prosecution. That's silly, so...
This is, this is an incident where it's not a trivial type thing. I think that, um, we need to have our attorney involved in, in the procedure, so that everything gets done according to the law.
And, and then if we issue these citations, uh, hopefully that gets their attention. In the meantime, if that dog is running at large, I would take the sheriff up on his offer, offer, and get, if you could snare it and get it over to Hoss, maybe we can get the, convince the owner to remove that.
No one else tries to contain the dog. I don't want anybody to get bit.
Right, right.
Please, protect yourself first. Let us try to get the dog in the back of our squad, or get it confined to where we can get a snare around. We don't care. But I'm not asking you guys to do it. Please don't. I don't want anybody else getting bit if it gets cornered.
Like video of, of, if they see the dog out, you're supposed to be able to get your thing?
A video would be, is sufficient enough to get a citation, right?
If someone, if, if across the street or whatever, you see this thing running around?
I don't, I don't have to see it, sir. I don't ever have to see this dog off leash. I don't ever have to hear the dog barking. If you call in and you want to be anonymous, I have to have that. I have to see the dog off leash, off his property. I have to hear the dog's womb berserk barking. If you want to be a formal complaint, which means that you would face Amanda Hoff, or any other dog owner, let's, let's use any other dog owner, in court, you would be the one that, that have to face it. Not, not me, because I don't have any personal, um, uh, I don't have anything. I, I can't say I saw it. But I, I don't need any video. If you say the dog's off leash, I come over and I say, do we, would you like to be a plaintiff? Yes. Dog's off leash down the street, right? Citation ready. If the dog's pulling Amanda down the street, give us a call. I can't write a ticket for that, but I can at least try to talk to her about getting, you know, being on either side of the road, making a proper way to go against, you know, and like to walk to the, to take the dog out. Let us have an opportunity to talk to her, uh, but like I said, the dog's off leash, the dog's barking, non-stop, just give it a call.
Right.
So, I, I appreciate all that, but how does that help us get our neighborhood back? How does issuing citations, maybe you can explain the process. How are the citations going to help us get our neighborhood back?
Well, that's, I mean, that was the point I had raised before, is sometime, you know, that the citations in and of itself won't work unless Mrs. Hoff changes her behavior. She doesn't change her behavior and, or, you know, divest herself, or, you know, tran, you know, give up her dog, it's not going to change, until we, we, we're going to have to take another step. That's where I was going to next. If the citations don't work, the, you know, the residents will be back. It's not fair to the people who live there, uh, to live like that, and, and to be exposed to that kind of risk of dog bite. So, yeah, that's the problem. The, the, the problem with just issuing citations. So, if we issue, issue the citations, may or may not work. She might fight the citations, and then we'll have to have, you know, if she fights them, we'll have to call you as witnesses into court. I mean, that's, that's the problem with the citations, plus it doesn't remove the dog from the home. The only way to remove that dog from the home is like sheriff's office says, is if they can snare it and get it to Hoss, maybe Hoss can take control or convince her to give it up, but if they turn the dog back, she goes, gets her license, and they give it back to her, it's still back in her home. The only way to get it, get, to get it out of the home is get a court to order it. And that's really under the town of Vernon or under Waukesha County. It's the same procedure in Waukesha County. Three incidents in Waukesha, you know, in Waukesha County, I think you have your three incidents, you know, so, it's just a matter of...
Are we under discussion for the three?
We're under discussion right now for the three citations, which have been moved and seconded. Moved and seconded. The issue, you know, part of the discussion is, is do we even bother and, with the citations and then go right to court? The motion's been made and seconded for the citations, or we can do both. You know, could issue the citations and then commence action, or commence action right away. So, let's, if there's further discussion on the citations, otherwise we'll call the question.
Regarding doing both at the same time, um, would it be prudent to get counsel's advice for the paper trail? To have the citations issued first, and then follow that up with going to court? I, um, I'm not sure, it's like a chicken or the egg, which comes first, or can they both happen at the same time?
Well, I think they can both happen at the, I think they can both happen at the same time.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, the citations, I think, can be issued a lot quicker than filing, filing on most...
I can write the citations by tomorrow. I can have them, uh, the town board, tomorrow's Friday. The town's town board, the town hall?
I'll stay open as long as you want.
I can, because they're all, they're not on the computer. I have to go get all the paper tickets.
Sure.
They're all the way in us.
If you have some here, I'd be pretty pleased.
I can, I can get them tomorrow, and then I'll leave them blank, and I'll find them up, like I do. And it'll just be a matter of the town attorney assigning monetary penalty, and those citations being mailed by the town hall.
Could I defer that question that you had regarding going to court to you and the town attorney to choreograph what should happen when?
Um, well, we, sure. I mean, you could, you could, I think, I think the fir, the, the first thing is the motion on the, on the floor, which is whether to issue those citations or not.
Right.
You've heard from the sheriff that those could be issued basically tomorrow.
Well, you brought up the...
If, if going to court, the summons and complaint, it's going to take a week, two weeks, three weeks, get it filed. There's going to be a period of time for the, um, the Hoff's to answer, it's, you know...
That's why I'm deferring as to what the choreograph is.
It's weeks, months before you even get close to court, as, you know, people know. And Waukesha Circuit Court is quicker than Milwaukee, way quicker than Milwaukee Court, which would probably be two years instead of several months.
And can I call the question?
Sure. Are we, and, um, so we'll go to that next. So, we'll call the question on the citations. To issue, uh, citation for an unlicensed dog, animal at large, and vicious animal is all part of the, uh, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And let's go to, before we go to the summons and complaint going to court, let's go to the bond schedule. I think that, uh, town clerk said, um, the, uh, bond for a licensed dog is...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but is it, should they stay? Because we're away, we're finished with the...
Well, if, unless we're going to talk about, yeah, we're, we're going to talk about next, the bond, the, the amount of the tickets, and then to bring up your, your point about Mr. Macy and, and, uh, going to court, I think they're interested in that too. Okay, so first we'll...
Just didn't want you guys to be here twiddling your thumbs, sorry.
Um, first we'll go to the dollar amount of the citations. I think it was stated, unlicensed dog, one hundred. Animal at large, one hundred, and vicious animal, town board needs to set it, and the bond schedule, I do, is somewhere between one hundred and one thousand. Uh, the one issued last April was for three hundred and fifty dollars, and that was a dog-on-dog attack.
And human.
And human.
That was, that was a very different...
Right. Well, it was between a German shepherd and a pit bull. And the pit bull lost.
Pit bull lost.
I, I'd make a motion that we concur with the, what we did in the previous, the three hundred and fifty dollars fine for the vicious animal.
Vicious animal, and a hundred dollars for unlicensed dog, and a hundred dollars at large. That's your motion?
Yep.
To set the, uh, set the forfeiture amount, I guess. Is there a second to those numbers?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'm, I'm just wondering, but because of the frequency, and Gary, you've got to give some insight, I'm going to ask you for some insight. Uh, is the three fifty an appropriate amount, considering the number of occurrences that we've had here?
Well, um, I, I based it on the fact that that's what we did with the previous, um, attack.
But that was a one incident?
Yeah, um, I, I'm, I, like the lady in the audience, am kind of apprehensive as, as the fines actually going to do anything. It may get their attention in regard to keeping their dog on the property, but then again, they may be just disregard the whole thing. I, I feel more comfortable in taking the people to court myself.
But that's the, the next question, not to the dollar amount of the fine.
I just, I, I made the motion for the simple fact that that's what we previously have done in regard to past incidents.
And the dollar amounts are plus court costs and fees. For example, I think the hundred dollar, uh, uh, forfeiture amount goes to two sixty-three. With all the court costs.
At that time, but I'm sure it's gone up.
It's gone up since then. So, the three hundred and fifty goes to, I don't, I don't know what that went as.
It'll probably be about a thousand dollar, eight hundred thousand dollar ticket.
Yeah, between the three hundred and fifty alone.
Yeah, but with...
And the two other ones, yeah. It'll be over a thousand dollars of tic, of tickets.
Okay, so...
With, with court costs.
Karen, could you please restate the three fifty with court costs and everything else, so, in the magnitude of...
We haven't issued a citation for several months, so I, I would double check with, um, the court costs. But a, a regular hundred dollar citation last year, after you got all your court costs, was two hundred and sixty-three ninety-five.
Okay.
So, that's, that's how much court costs are added on to the, the forfeiture. Your forfeiture is a hundred, and then a hundred and sixty-three ninety-five was all the other costs.
The only reason I'm bringing this up, okay, is that it seems to me that the residents and others, uh, and the children waiting at a bus stop, okay, to me, just accelerates this, uh, I don't know if accelerates is the right word, but, um...
Makes it more urgent.
Makes it more urgent, yeah, and, um, I, I'm wanting to make sure that they, we get their attention, uh, with this. That something has to be done before, God forbid, some child gets hurt.
Okay, so, um, we've got a motion to set the forfeiture amounts at a hundred, hundred and three fifty. You've heard the discussion about, you've heard the discussion about, uh, those are just the forfeiture amounts. With the court costs, it's likely to be, um, in excess of a thousand dollars, uh, in total.
Karen, did I second that?
No, there was no second to that.
No second, okay.
I thought you did second that.
I thought I did too, but I will second you now.
Any further discussion on the setting the forfeiture amount? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, there was discussion during our discussion on the, on the citations and the dollar amounts about proceeding to court. We've, um, supervisors have said, maybe we should authorize the town chair to check with John May, our town attorney. Um, other supervisors saying maybe we should proceed, you know, authorize and proceed right away, or maybe infer that, um, given the, the allegations made. Um, so what, what, uh, does the board, uh, want to do about, uh, taking the next step, which would be going to court to try to get the animal, um, a judgment, the animal be removed?
I, it's my opinion, okay, we, we don't get into a lot of court actions, okay, it's been my experience. And I guess I would like to get his insight on what we've just passed tonight, and what we're planning to do, and if he has any course corrections for us as we go down this path. That's the only reason for checking with counsel.
So, would be authorizing the town chair to collect data from the town board on...
To confer, confer with town council about, um, uh, what, procedure and cost to, uh, um... To draft the summons, summons and complaint and force it?
And I, I don't know. I, I'd just like to empower the town chair to do what has to be done, rather than delay it, okay, to the next board meeting.
Well, then you would be authorizing, authorizing the town to proceed.
Yeah.
You know, with filing a summons and complaint.
Correct.
Uh, there, there is a chance this woman will surrender the dog if she's considered it before, correct? And this isn't, not a small fine that she's facing. She may be willing to surrender the dog.
Well, and I suppose, um, if she's willing to surrender the dog, perhaps those tickets could be plea bargained. That's not his world.
I've never heard her offering to give up the dog. I've heard her dad make comments, go ahead and take it, but he, I've never heard of her offering to give up the dog.
I, I think there was something in a Hoss report where they did, did talk to her about that. I could be incorrect about that, but...
Well, then I'd leave it up to the chair to decide what we should be doing for the third step with the counsel.
Oh, no, make the motion. Make the motion if you...
Well, um, I, I'd be hesitant to proceed without direct authority from the board to, you know, to enter into a litigation. I, it's just not, not something the town chair should be doing, or any supervisor should be doing it. I, you know...
I agree. I agree, the.
They could authorize you to speak with counsel to get some advice to bring back.
There you go.
I could do that, absolutely could do that.
Do you want a motion on that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make the motion that you could confer with counsel, get his advice and guidance as to how we should proceed with the next step.
Okay, and I, and that would be bring it back by our next meeting, February twentieth, that's a two-week delay.
Yes.
But in the meantime, there are other remedies, uh, that we could proceed in the meantime.
Correct.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, if the board would choose also in, in the letter of the citations that are being issued, um, I could, if the town board would like, I could also let note the, let the person know that the town board is considering or getting more information on a summons and complaint to remove the dog, if the board chose to do a, to do it, that, that the board has authorized the town chair to look at to summons and complaint to remove the dog.
I'm not trying to protect the dog owner, but is that a prudent to say that we're talking about removing the dog?
That's what this motion was made. And seconded to authorize the town chair to confer with legal counsel in regards to the town's, um, gathering more informations on a summons and complaint to remove the dog. It's not that you're doing it.
That's what the motion is.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, we just need to be careful when we communicate with the dog owner regarding those tickets. We, um, we, um, did talk to Attorney Macy on the attorney's call. Uh, we have to be careful that we're not threatening her in any manner whatsoever, so. I mean, a- as in, you know, if you don't behave, they're going to remove you, that's a threat, can't say that.
No, although we think about it.
You know, the only thing I, I want to make sure of is that we proceed in a, a kind of a expedient manner in this regard. That as, as we know, a lot of government drags out and forever, you go on and on and on and on. And we need to resolve this as quickly, as fast as possible, for the safety of the residents in that neighborhood, that, uh, they aren't exposed to this. Like the lady said, it's winter time now, you're not going to see this animal out as much, but come springtime, she'll probably be out a lot. So we need to get this resolved as quickly as possible, so that, uh, uh, everybody can go back to having their comfortable.
Normal life. Gary, I concur completely, that's why I was wanting to have the chair, okay. Check with counsel, bring it back to the next.
I agree with you, just as long as we get an answer from Macy and get it moving along.
Yep.
Well, I, I too would like to, uh, do this as quickly and efficiently as possible, I mean.
And you've been known to do that. To be efficient and timely.
Try my best. Okay, any further discussion we?
Did you second that motion?
Yeah, we have a.
Okay, I just wanted, that's what I have now back there.
So we have a motion, uh, made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I will bring that back, I will do that, and, um, unfortunately, I'll be seeing Mr. Macy quite a bit in the next two weeks, but when we get to.
On other things.
On other items. Uh, and I will bring back a report on, I put it on the agenda for February twentieth. Sorry about, you know, yet another meeting, but, um, and you're welcome, welcome to come, of course. Okay, anything further on, I've lost my agenda, here it is. Anything further on agenda item six A before we go to six B?
Can a copy of the ordinance, which is the ordinance be included with the citations or whatever response you have?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Not as a credit, but as a, you know, this is next, obviously.
Well, those, yeah, the ordinances are, sure, we can include a copy, they're obviously public records, right on our website and so on, so. It's all in chapter one seventeen, animals, I think, I think you people are well aware of those.
You can't make arrangements law.
Right.
That's a good point.
Right. Okay, anything further? We will now move to item, uh, six B, Town of Vernon Incorporated update. Let me make sure I keep all of my.
Good luck.
Yes.
Okay, we don't need to take a recess. I was going to say, we could take a short recess, but we're okay, we are okay. No, I'm happy to.
Can they pick that up real quick?
Okay, um, item six B, Town of Vernon up, incorporation update. As everybody knows, this is, um, at least on the board, uh, this is on the every, every regular town board agenda for update. Um, in particular, well, let me back up. I want to state, um, again, that what we are trying to do here incorporate under section sixty-six point zero-two-one-six-two, which is an incorporation of certain towns contiguous to third-class cities or villages. And, uh, uh, that is a special statute that's expiring on June thirty, twenty twenty, this year. And, uh, it is not the regular, uh, incorporation statute found elsewhere in section, in the, uh, Wisconsin statutes. And so there are eight criteria, um, there are no, um, other criteria than those eight that we need to meet. And so, um, under other statutes, uh, to incorporate things like having police departments and sanitary, uh, treatment facilities, and items like that, libraries, um, I simply do not apply to this incorporation. Um, as to the eight, eight criteria, uh, the town board has been working on this for, uh, the last, what, eight, nine months now, uh, since, uh, um, May of last year, I do believe, or June. And, um, uh, with our deadline, we're rushing through it, rushing through it a lot faster than personally I would like to do, but we have no other choice if we want to get this to a referendum vote, uh, of the general public. So everybody is, all, all electors in the Town of Vernon will have a say-so at the ballot box and a binding referendum to decide. And it'll be a very simple referendum, uh, you're either for a village or against a village. And, um, it's basically an up or, up or down vote. Uh, in order to get it to referendum and get the election results certified by June thirty, we have to provide certain notices ahead of those elections, six weeks. And so we're looking at ma-, meeting these criteria by the beginning of May or sooner, so that election can be properly noticed and scheduled, taken, and certified, and we can get our paperwork to the state of Wisconsin by June thirty. Um, so the eight criteria, uh, we are, we are presently meet seven out of the eight. I think I announced that last, um, last meeting. The last one that we need to meet is the town has entered into and is bound by at least two separate cooperative boundary agreements under section sixty-six point zero-three-zero-seven, with at least two municipalities. We have two boundary agreements, cooperative plans, one is with the Town of Waukesha, one is with the Town of McWanago. Um, uh, and they have been approved, signed, and sent to Department of Administration for approval. Um, the city of Waukesha requested a public hearing, um, and that was the only requestor for the Town of Waukesha, Town of Vernon, uh, border agreement cooperative plan. That public hearing is a Department of Administration public hearing, it's going to be held, it's on our, um.
Meeting dates.
Next town meeting dates on the, on the agenda. It's, uh, in the Town of Waukesha Town Hall on February thirteenth, between three P M and six P M.
Would you, uh, presume that, sorry, would you like to have board members there, or what is your feeling about this meeting?
Well, I think it is important that, um, uh, board members do, do attend for as long as possible. They don't necessarily need to be there be the whole three hours, but it certainly would be helpful to support the Town of Vernon's, um, actions in entering into a border agreement. They're welcome to speak later on, I'm going to be asking for specific authority for me to speak and provide written comments on behalf of the Town of Vernon. Um, yeah, because I intend to do it. And again, if you recall from the public hearing with the Department of Administration on the Village of McWanago, um, cooperative plan, first of all, this, no city requested it, we had twenty of our own residents request the public hearing, and they came and talked. And it, it's a public hearing, anyone in the public can talk and make comments, and they did it the last one. So I assume, uh, people will be doing the same this time around. Um, uh, certainly the City of Waukesha is going to be there giving comments. Uh, and so that's coming up. The Town of McWanago, or a cooperative plan with the Town of McWanago, uh, that has been filed, as like I mentioned, there were no requests for a public hearing, and so there will be no public hearing with, uh, on the Town of McWanago agreement. Um, Town of Waterford is not, as last agenda, last meeting has indicated interest in entering into a cooperative plan. Um, I, that, we won't be able to get that done, uh, in, by June thirty. However, it probably still makes sense to at least talk to them as, as, and we have sent our, our, the one we've entered into with the Town of Waukesha is the point of beginning. And again, uh, to remind everyone, uh, these cooperative plans that we've entered into with the Town of Waukesha and the Town of McWanago set the border exactly where it has been and is today, has been for the last a hundred and fifty years or thereabouts.
Eighteen thirty-nine.
Eighteen thirty-nine. So, uh, I would, I'm, I'm assuming we would do the exact same thing with the Town of Waterford. Um, uh, and, uh, those agreements, again, establish a joint planning agreement for the, um, uh, approximately half mile um, from each of the common border to, uh, so that we can ensure, you know, orderly and consistent development on each side of our boundary. And also provides for shared services where we meet at least once, once a year to see where, if there's opportunities to share services or buy jointly, buy equipment together, and that would include D P W, fire, police, that, you know, the whole gamut. And, uh, the idea being, we need to open up these lines of communication, and, uh, because it's expense. You know, capital, if we can share capital, equipment, if that's possible, or anything, any kind of sharing. So that's the point of the agreement, and there's no reason why we can't do it with the Town of Waterford, we've done other things with the Village of Waterford, so. The, uh, fire chief is in the audience shaking his yes we have, so.
What is the status of, uh, Waukesha, Town, these are towns, Towns of Waukesha and McWanago insofar as finalizing, and, and ultimately Waterford?
Okay, with, with the Town of Vernon?
Yes.
Okay, so the Town of Vernon and the Town of Waukesha, we'll do them one way. Town of Vernon, and that's specifically on the agenda under this item. Town of, um, uh, Vernon, Town of Waukesha, has been submitted to the Department of Administration for approval.
Okay.
City of Waukesha has requested a public hearing.
Okay.
That is going to be this February thirteenth.
You've answered, yep.
And then, and then they need to decide within ninety days of submittal. Town of Vernon, Town of McWanago Cooperative Plan has been submitted to the Department of Administration. No public hearing has been requested, and so there won't be one with the Department of Administration. They'll have ninety days from submission to, uh, approve that, or provide comments.
When was submission?
Uh, that was, yeah, we submitted it in the very first day we could have, under the statute, which is January ninth, or.
So it's been over.
Or January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. You already had over thirty days, or in process already.
Yeah, it's, right, since January thirteenth.
The D O A has sent the town notice, and there's no request for.
Right, they've confirmed that there has been no request for a public hearing on the Town of McWanago.
All right.
Now, as to the other towns, remember, in Waukesha County, there's five towns they're trying to incorporate. The Town of Vernon is not, you know, doing this by themselves, the Town of Waukesha is trying to incorporate, the Town of Brookfield is trying to incorporate, Town of Lisbon is trying to incorporate, and the Town of Conemaugh, Conemaugh is trying to incorporate under the same statutes. So, um, we will get an update, you know, we just hear about where they are, but I'll see if I can get a better update, um, uh, sometime later this month about where the other towns are. So I'm glad we're part of the five, I mean, if we weren't, then people would be calling us and saying, hey, why aren't you trying to do it?
Good luck trying to catch up.
Right, you can't catch up now.
Well, I'm, that's, uh, the other thing, the reason for my question, Carl, was to see what the submittal was.
Okay.
And the other thing is, when do we, D O A, what is the timeline for their response?
Ninety days from submission, so.
Okay, so January, okay.
So, uh, Town of McWanago was, was January thirteenth, so ninety days from thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Town of Waukesha was December twenty-third. So ninety days from December twenty-third. We're a little bit fa-, uh, a little, Town of Waukesha is a little bit further ahead because we had our public hearing on that agreement in, in October, and we couldn't get McWanago scheduled till November. So that's the, that's the reason why there's a little bit of a difference in the timelines there. But if, uh, ninety days even from January is, is, um, January thirteenth is April thirteenth, if it's approved, we have, I mean, we could have a referendum in May.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything further? I think that's the update we're going to have, uh, on February twentieth, town board meeting. We'll have our public hearing with the D O A on, with the Town of Waukesha. We'll have a report for the public for that, and, um, uh, Town of McWanago will proceed, there's no public hearing. Uh, as far as the other towns, I know there's other public hearings, uh, scheduled as well, if people are interested. Uh, the Town of Brookfield and the Town of Waukesha have a public hearing with the D O A February eleventh at Town of Waukesha, no, Town of Brookfield, Town of Brookfield Town Hall. And also the Town of, at the courtesy of the City of Waukesha, by the way. And also the Town of Waukesha and the Town of McWanago, the City of Waukesha also requested a public hearing, and that is scheduled for February twentieth, uh, between four and seven. Right, be, you know, we have a board meeting at six thirty, uh, but obviously, I plan on going down just to see, ahead of our board meeting and then coming to our board meeting, just to see how that public hearing is going.
City is throwing roadblocks in every direction.
But the important thing to note on these public hearings, they are public hearings with the D O A, it does not slow down the ninety days.
No.
So, uh, that, uh, that's good, obviously, they have, um, it's in the statute, I mean, as, as I, um, when I talked to the D O A about that statute, I said, so somebody from New Zealand could request, and they said, yes. So fortunately, no one ever has, but, but, uh, it's the way the statute is written. Um, it seems to me that they should restrict that to, uh, electors in communities or something. You know, um, but that's how it's written. Uh, so any other further questions? So just, just to let everybody know, you're outside of public comments, unfortunately, um, unless it's quick.
Be quick.
You have a question, righto? Yeah, what?
We have ninety days from November thirteenth, and from the D O A who sent the, uh, comments up between the, the Village of McWanago and the Town of, that was a ninety-day response.
Okay, 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 um, that's not on the agenda, that has to deal, what he, what Mr. Singer is saying from the back has to deal with the Village of McWanago, Town of Vernon Border Agreement, which we've received a determination on. So we will have that on, we received a determination that it, it failed, okay? We will put that on the agenda for February twentieth for a final report.
Thank you.
Um. Anything else on incorporation update? Yeah, yeah. Um, so we're on to letter C. I know where our meeting is running, but we had a very important six A for an hour and a half.
If I could go to, I, going to C, uh, six C.
Yep.
Um, I'd just like to publicly, um, thank the chair for all the work that he's been doing, uh, with these cooperative agreements, the eight points from the D O A, or whoever those came from, uh, because I don't think there's a full appreciation of all the shadow work that's going on between, uh, town chair and the clerk treasurer, and you're to be congratulated for all that effort.
Uh, thank you, but we're not to the finish line yet, so.
Well, I know, no, no, as far as we've made it. Positive thinking, thank you.
Yes, positive thinking. So I put. Yeah, positive thinking. So I put item C on, and I kind of teed it up in my comments. We do have a public hearing with the Department of Administration coming up, and I'm asking for a motion to authorize the Town Chairman to speak and provide written comments on behalf of the Town of Vernon at that Department of Administration public hearing for the cooperative boundary plan between the Town of Vernon and the Town of Waukesha.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, what I plan on doing is just, you know, walking the DOA through the agreement, what it says, and outlining why it meets the statutory requirements, and then requesting that it be approved, is what I'm contemplating saying, just so everybody, you know, is aware, aware. And, you know, obviously supervisors can come and give comments as well. So I, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Supervisor number two, Wiley, Public Health and Safety Recommendation on Traffic Issues on National Avenue. I'll let you lead the discussion.
The Board sent to Public Health and Safety Committee a recommendation that, look at a complaint that was, not a complaint, but an interest that was expressed by a resident regarding traffic safety on National Avenue from approximately where Muller Brothers' old dump, Keishen is now.
Right.
Down to Center Drive. They were concerned in regard to excessive speed, people who are not being able to turn safely from, from the westbound lanes going to Heather Ridge. But anyway, what it boiled down to is, the committee looked at all aspects of the information provided by the clerk and the, and the county, and we agree that it is basically an unsafe area. Since it's a county road, we don't have any jurisdiction over it in regard to our DPW, but we would like to, the committee, according to the minutes, if you can, got your minutes, are recommended that the speed limit on National Avenue be lowered to be consistent. In other words, it's forty-five coming down the hill, goes to thirty-five at Vernon Center, and then goes back to forty-five. Be consistent with the Vernon area of thirty-five miles an hour. If that's not possible, then signage be placed at, some kind of signage indicating that there's, the intersections to be aware of. We got, we did look at all the police reports and everything in regard to this, and majority of the accidents that occur in that area are driver error. It's not so much, I don't believe the road is at fault, but it's people not paying attention. But we could ask the county to look at possibly putting more, more signs indicating, you know, dangerous intersections, or make a recommendation about lowering the speed limit was the other possibility. I don't know whether they would do that based on the simple fact of impeding traffic. They feel forty-five is significant, but if, most of us that travel that road know that it's pretty dangerous when you come up and you want to make a turn going into the subdivision, or from either the west or the east. If some people slow down, there's a possibility of rear-end collisions and everything, but that's, that's the recommendation of the Board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, you know, thank the committee for looking at this, and you, and you head up that committee Supervisor Wiley. I do have a couple of questions. One is, what is the speed limit on National Avenue between Center and Evergreen? Isn't it already thirty-five? Am I right about that?
Part of it is.
Part of it is.
Part of it is, yes.
Thirty-five sign.
Right.
Right, east of Center.
Yes.
And then turns forty-five once it gets to a part of the valley.
Past Evergreen, though.
Past Evergreen.
Past Evergreen. So it, so for one, it's already thirty-five between, I think, Center and Evergreen, I thought. Both sides of the road?
Should be.
Should be, that's what I thought.
I don't know if it, it probably is, John.
There is a sign on Center, I know it, because I drive through there. It's thirty-five.
Center Drive, there's one, thirty-five, but not how far that goes, I don't know.
See, that's, that's where part of the problem is, you know, you have people that don't, don't see that sign, or don't pay any attention to it, and they're still exceeding the speed limit at thirty-five. But it's just an idea that we thought that, to be consistent, put it at thirty-five for that whole area right there.
But, but once you get east of Evergreen on ES, there's no driveways, there's nothing, and it's forty-five now. I just hate to, and part of that's in the Village of Big Bend, by the way, and I don't want to create another speed trap.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Because I get a lot of complaints about the Village of Big Bend writing tickets to people in the Town of Vernon, in the Town of Vernon.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Well, what about the?
Well, I meant, just to add to your point, the forty-five, Gary, or the thirty-five starts just what was, what we've known as Vernon Center.
Right.
Going east, okay, so.
Yeah, then it goes back to forty-five as, as you get out of Vernon Center, get closer to Hilo.
Yes.
It's, it's thirty-five there as well.
Yeah.
Just west of Hilo goes to forty-five.
Yep. West of Hilo goes to forty-five. Going into McWanago, goes back up to forty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Did you get that from me?
But, but, but the committee, that's not where these accidents are, down west of Hilo going into McWanago, they're.
They're at Evergreen.
Trust me, they're at Evergreen.
Would it be possible, if we send a letter to the, from the town?
What kind of signage did you guys talk about? That, that might help.
Dangerous intersection, or?
Oh, dangerous intersection, yeah.
Yeah, or dangerous, or some?
Some kind of signage that indicate to people to be aware of that there's a problem, you know, that they could be possibly getting involved in.
Is there, is there a sign, I can't remember, going, going west on National, is there an intersection sign marking Evergreen?
No.
But it's, it's a, it's a Class A.
It's a Class A.
It's got XL, XL on both sides.
And it's got a fly-by-line, too, doesn't it? I know Center does, because people fly by me on Center.
Evergreen does, too, it's a full.
It's a full, yeah, it's a full class, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be too effective in regard to people's speed, and.
I don't know, is there such a thing, a dangerous intersection sign? Let's suggest something that they might actually do.
Caution, yeah.
Caution intersection ahead.
Something like that.
Caution, put yourself on down.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's.
We should have one of those every block.
That's just the recommendation, you know. The county, being the county, they might just indicate, say, there's nothing wrong with the intersection. The majority of the accidents that occurred there have been driver error rather than a road.
If not all of them, you know.
They would do a study, and just, a little, it'd take a while.
Yeah.
They'll do a vehicle count on the road, take, you know, take into consideration, traffic, you know, patterns.
Okay, that's, that's what we're looking to recommend to the Board, you know. We're just trying to appease the concerns of the citizens who sent forth the letter indicating the problem.
Gary, when you say there, the term you used was driver error, or?
Yeah, driver.
Okay, what, give me a flavor.
One of the incidents was, the lady indicated she rear-ended a person, the car was indicating it was going to turn left into Heather Ridge, and she didn't see the car because she was looking at a rummage sale.
Got it, okay.
So.
That's one incident there.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's kind of driver error.
That's, that's what I was referring to, yep, thank you.
All driver errors, I understand.
Okay.
Of some sort.
There's deer.
There's animals.
And you can't, can't put a sign out for the deer. Deer don't read.
Deer crossing. There's a joke on that, and I won't bring it up. It's funny.
So, so you're looking for some sort of motion to?
Yeah.
Send the Waukesha County to, what?
Provide us with information regarding safety concerns on National Avenue.
The engineering study, yeah?
Engineering, yeah.
So at this point, you're looking for more information as opposed to recommending dangerous intersection or caution?
Right.
Intersection sign?
Is there a possibility of, of providing signage indicating in regard to intersections? Something to that effect.
I got a motion.
Okay, you got enough to write, write a letter?
I got enough to write a letter.
All right, that'll go, good. Thank you, that's all we're looking for.
And the intersections would be ES and Center and ES and Evergreen, is that what, you're both of them?
Yes, that's correct.
And ES and going into Heather Ridge.
Yes, that's right.
Oh, oh, yeah, Scotland, Scotland.
That's a pretty.
So, so three intersections.
Right.
Three intersections.
Yep.
Once you get to one sixty-four, there's big stoplights, so I don't know if you're gonna, you know.
They better stop for that, yeah. Okay, I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second? Further discussion?
I was concerned there for a minute.
No, I couldn't get my button on, sorry.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
The Fire Department is here. Yeah, that's next, LifeQuest. They don't care about that.
Okay. LifeQuest is item six E, F, and G. E is the resolution designating public depositories. We do have one here that took out Paramax Bank and put in Hometown Bank. I'd say, let's just hold that until we decide, first of all, whether we're even going to authorize Hometown Bank, because there's no, no point in adopting this particular resolution if we're not going to include Hometown Bank in it, and, and go right to, if there's no objections, go right to six F, Hometown Banking Resolution, and you received packets of information last board meeting, at today's board meeting. And so I know we were asking for more information at the last board meeting, it was tabled. I think we reached a consensus as far as several items, several items, that being, number one, the, LifeQuest would not have any sort of withdrawal rights on the account, that they could view the account and make deposits in the account, and I think we got, we had a discussion, I don't know if we reached a consensus on that discussion, which is why it got tabled in part, on whether to use, you know, to, sorry, to establish an account at Hometown Bank, really at the request of LifeQuest, because that's their, I don't want to use the word hometown bank, but that's the bank in their hometown that they use. We had this, we, the resolutions they sent over to us had their signature authorities on there. They're still not quite complete. The Clerk Treasurer and I looked at them, and, you know, there's, we'll have to, if, if, if we're going to proceed, we will, we will be making changes to them tonight, yeah, before we get them adopted. So there's that. So I think the first issue to me is, and we've talked, we talked about it last meeting, we talked about it with representatives of LifeQuest. Why do we even need to bother, you know, establishing a bank account? We have this relationship with Citizens Bank, it's right here. We'd just be adding another account from them that they would make deposits into and view. Withdrawals would stay under our normal procedures. We already have signature cards set up, and it would just be another account at the town. I mean, just like the Town of Vernon has several, you know, the Cricket account and the USL account, and we have, we have four or five accounts already. So it would just be another one, and we'd restrict access, you know, to that, that account. So that's kind of where it was left last board meeting. So further, so I think that's the first, first question. We did talk about fees. I mean, the fees were, we were told no fees, but you look at the fee account, and that, to me, it looked like they were charging a fifteen dollar a month maintenance fee, and, you know, we're not going to pay any fees. We don't pay fees at, as citizens. So to me, if, if, you know, fifteen dollars a month is a hundred and eighty dollars a year, but to me, there was no, when we switched to LifeQuest from our prior billing, our prior billing used their corporate accounts, of course, and sent us the money, but as we discussed last meeting, but there was nothing in their contract, that we're paying them eight percent, not seven, so we're paying them the bigger commission. There's nothing in that contract that required, that I could see, required us to use their bank and their credit card company and to pay additional fees. So there's the fee issue, too. I think from your, the Clerk Treasurer's perspective, I suppose it's easier if we just keep it at Citizens, although you could work with it, you know, the other way.
Either way, and I know when we talked to LifeQuest, they said it could go either way. They just felt Hometown would be easier for them.
For easier for them.
But Chip did say he didn't have any, they didn't have any problem using Citizens, just as long as it's a restricted account that the deposits are, that are not commingled with other funds, and.
Right, which, which, we would set up a separate account.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, we, yeah.
And there'd be three authorized users, just like you do for your, you know, following the town's policies.
And being the Treasurer, you'd have another bank you'd have to deal with, and.
Yeah, like I said, and when Carl and I were, excuse me, Chairman Partner and I were looking through, there was other issues we wanted, we would, if it was at Hometown, we really wanted to raise, but when the Chairman said, let's ask the Board, what's, what does the Board want? We'll do whatever you say, but it's really a Board decision on what bank you want to use. But as long as you understand it's a, it's an account used only for, you know, the fire department's deposits, ambulance deposits.
Ambulance, yeah, you know, fees.
Right.
And that's the only, and, and I would concur with that. That's what the account would be at Hometown, it'd be here. We'd set up a Citizens Bank account if we did it at Citizens that way. I'm always mindful and concerned about, I won't say hidden costs, but there are labor costs in the Clerk Treasurer's office, and anytime you put more work there, and maybe it's very slight, if it's another bank account, or bank account outside Citizens, there is a cost there. It's extra labor, and, you know, we're, our budgets are squeezed. We don't want to have any more hours out of the Clerk Treasurer's office, we can avoid it.
And this company is totally different from our last. Lorraine, you're very familiar with, a deposit was made, ACH'd into, into our account, but I'm sure whatever federal regulations, I shouldn't say that, I'm assuming those, those.
They should apply to Citizens, too.
Well, it's, it's my understanding, when, when those federal funds come in, they have to go into a dedicated, secure account. And when we talked to Chip, he, he indicated that they could work with either or. Either Hometown or, Hometown would be easier for them.
Then why would, why are we even arguing? We should set it up for Citizens and proceed?
Yes.
That, that saves a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, if they're agreeable to it, but there's, there's no reason not to just go ahead and set it up with, with our bank.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you see a problem, Chief?
Just do something.
Yeah, we need, we need, we do need to get this going, absolutely, yes.
I mean, we, from a Department's standpoint, we've done everything that they've asked us in terms of preparations and computers and everything else, so we're just, this is the last thing that's kind of holding us up.
I make a motion, and then we, we send LifeQuest, set up a bank account at Citizens, a dedicated account at Citizens Bank, and proceed from that.
I'll second that motion.
Dedicated account at Citizens Bank.
For LifeQuest funds.
For, for LifeQuest deposits.
Right.
Of, what do we call them, EMS charges or EMS?
EMS, Medicare.
EMS, whatever comes in.
EMS deposits for EMS?
Deposit of EMS and.
Right.
Can I think of it, fees or charges?
EMS fees, yeah.
Fees and charges, okay. Is there a second? I heard a second.
Lorraine's second.
Lorraine seconded. Supervisor Dashick seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, we will, we won't have to take any action on Hometown Banking Resolutions because we're not establishing an account. We've already had resolutions at Citizens, so I think we'll be okay there.
Mr. Chairman, would the board, uh, give me permission to email Chip and, uh, Mr. Becktonight?
Oh, yeah.
Tonight to let him know that, because I'm sure they'll have to get things going on their end. Is, is that all right with the board?
So, should we just make a motion, we'll motion, a motion to authorize clerk treasurer to notify, um, you know, LifeQuest of our decisions, um, and I'll include decisions on, on the bank account and credit card, which we'll talk about next, so you can notify them on that.
Okay.
Uh, tonight or tomorrow morning, uh...
I'll do it tonight, because they really need to know.
At, at, um, you know, no later than tomorrow, how's that?
I'll do it tonight.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll make that motion, okay.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, opposed, no one. So now let's talk about the credit card application here again, um, uh, this is an application, this is not an application for a credit, let's be clear, about, for a credit card for the town. It's an application for this company called Forte to run customer, our patients, or people who are charged when they're paying their bill, credit cards through the account. And the clerk, clerk treasurer and I talked about this as well. We do, can take credit cards here at the town already, and they could pay that way.
Right. My only, and I think, I think point in our credit card company, I'm sure, could set up, like we do for taxes, a special, a special point and pay account, that the only payments that go into that account are EMS-related, nothing else. So it's a clean, clear account, and, and accounting of what was paid by credit card that, um, I, that I could pass word LifeQuest into, they could see everything that's going into, into that account. There is no monthly charge for that. However, all the, uh, if, if the patient pays by e-check credit card, there's different options for the patient. Before the patient would actually pay the bill, they're, they, they know what that fee is going to be.
Right, a convenience fee for, you know, the credit card.
Because a credit card charge, depending on the, the amount, could be substantial.
Right.
You know, or...
It works very well for tax collection.
It does.
So that's, that's helpful, and if we can, because LifeQuest needs to know who paid, because they're in charge of collection. So they will need to know, and so we could allow them to look or send it to them.
Give them access.
Gives them access to, to view.
Mr. Chairman, didn't he explain that they actually facilitate that though through their website and their billing process? That the people call?
So does the county.
LifeQuest?
Yeah, the county.
What I'm getting at is that if they're doing the collection, then if you're gonna be taking the credit card payments here, how is that, how, how are you gonna co-mingle those things? Because I don't think that's gonna be optimally very effective.
Well, it, 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 it would be, because they, the, the, the person could make the payment, and the deposit goes right into, not the town's account, it goes into the Citizens Bank account just for, just for, you know, EMS collections.
Right, but how are you, how are, how are you going to reconcile those, those different locations? Because the reason we're paying LifeQuest eight percent is they're, they're supposed to be the one-stop shop to set everything up that they come in, they do the billing process, the people make the payments to them, the money gets put into whatever proper account it is, and then they, because of that effectiveness, in theory, are gonna increase our, our, our collection rates. But if they're not doing that because they're not processing those credit card payments, how are they gonna track them? I'm, I'm just asking that.
Well, what happens is, is when the, the person makes that payment, and if it's going, you know, it had the person's name, and it usually ha- it has the account, what they're paying, and, just like any medical bill, and then it's paid, I mean, they would actually see the deposit go into the town's, I mean, they could reconcile that very easily.
And then you gotta worry about paying commissions back to them on that stuff, right?
Well, if everything's being deposited into that account, that, that, the issues of commission is relevant to anything that goes into that account, any amount.
You understand what I'm saying, I'm very, because when we had these issues with EMS billing with the whole intercept program in Austin Waterford, it was very hard to, to track what was going on. Now, I think we're dealing with a much better company, but just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what the process is, so that it doesn't become very confusing to, well, I paid a credit card and not LifeQuest is sending them a second notice at the, at the sixty day point to say, "Hey, you haven't paid your bill yet." And it's like, oh, well, yeah, I paid a credit card to Citizens Bank, but that wasn't tracked by LifeQuest.
No, and what I'm...
Just from an operational standpoint, I want to make sure we're...
And what I'm saying is, if I was the billing company and somebody's paying through the only point source they have for a credit card or e-check or a debit, whatever, whatever payment that person's making, they'll be able to actually see, they'll, they will be able to see what they paid, when they paid, on what account, multiple accounts, I'm sure they'll be able, what, what's the difference if it's Forte or point and pay? A payment's a payment.
Right, LifeQuest is not gonna be tracking the credit cards, that's what this Forte company is tracking, and they want to charge us fifteen dollars a month to do it.
Fifteen a month, right?
Right, fourteen ninety-five a month to do it.
But wasn't that, wasn't that something they kind of administrate? Isn't that how we explained it to us, that they kind of track all that? And that then those credit card fees aren't paid by us or paid by the consumer?
Not the Forte, not the monthly fee.
Not, not the fourteen fifty it was a month, but the actual, if you pay five hundred dollars and it's a two-point-five percent rate, you're paying twenty-five dollars.
Whenever you see, whenever somebody makes that type of payment, the person receiving the payment never sees the charge.
Right.
I mean, they can see it, but it, when it's deposited in your, in your account, you don't see what the, what the person pays.
Right, but...
In the account.
But I just want to make sure that we're gonna be able to track that and make sure we have accountability for all of that, so that we don't get into this spreadsheet dilemma we have with the last, last company.
And the only thing I haven't, I haven't checked with point and pay yet, I mean, I, you know, when we were talking about the, the Forte, the credit card company that they would like us to use, we were just surprised, because we did ask them, "Is there any way you can waive that?" And they said, "No, we can't." Well, how can our credit card company waive it for us? I don't know, maybe there's different rules if you're collecting medical bills, I don't know, but we don't pay anything for our credit card service.
Just as long as we're on the same, just so we don't create a dysfunctional system.
Right, I, and I agree with that, we gotta, we, but, but if we use point and pay and there's the, a report being generated, or they have view rights, that they can re- reconcile right into a dedicated account.
And run reports?
And run reports, and then, and then treat bills as paid.
Right.
I mean, right now, they're running them, if they want to run it through Forte, they've, they maintain who owes what money. They've got to interface with Forte anyway, for their other customers to mark the bill paid. They have to.
I don't know how they, how they track that on their end of, on their side of the fence, so we just need to make sure that we're, you know, we're not creating another hurdle where...
Right.
All of a sudden now, it's like, well, now you gotta, you've gotta send me two reports so I can reconcile four reports on this. I just, I want to make it smooth, because when people go and you log on and pay your bill, it gives you the options on their website to pay a bill, and one of them is to use a credit card.
Well, and, and like it's...
Is that link still gonna be there, or is it gonna say, "Go to the Vernon website to do whatever"?
Well, and that's...
Which would be problematic.
Yeah, and like I said, if you pay on the county's website to pay your taxes, it looks like they're paying it to Waukesha County. The person doesn't know it's going into our account, but it, but I haven't checked, and just so you know, I'd have to, I'd have to have the board's permission to check with point and pay and to check with LifeQuest. I haven't even investigated that yet, just so you know.
So, so my question on it is, is, okay, if they, LifeQuest sends out a bill to somebody, right, and they, they pay that bill to LifeQuest, LifeQuest takes out their percentage of what they owe, and then sends the town of Vernon their money to our bank account. Now, if they're paying this by credit card directly to you, how is LifeQuest gonna get their percentage?
The agreement we have with LifeQuest is they don't take out anything until, until it's reconciled on a monthly basis. We don't, they don't take any money out of any, whether it's at Hometown Bank or Citizens Bank. We don't pay anything until we, both of, the customer and the client reconcile the account.
It's the monthly work.
And then, and then, then they agree upon the eight percent, and then it's sent to the board.
Right, and it's a separate check or a separate ACH back into LifeQuest. They don't take the money before they deposit it, the full amount, the full amount gets deposited.
Right.
And when I say reconcile, it's, it's not only the deposits, if there's a refund due, I mean...
Refund's right off, all those, all those...
Yep, all that goes into, yep, right.
Right, and if the customer's actually owed a refund, just like before, just like any other refund, town board always has to approve it, no matter if it's, you know, we've got a whole slug of them tonight to approve.
Right, and Chief, like I said, the point and pay might not work, but, you know, if, and the board says, "No, we don't want to investigate it," we won't do anything.
I mean, right, and I get that money's money, but for the fourteen dollars a month, it might just be the cost of doing business to make it an efficient process for the town.
That, that could be true.
Well, in, in my view, if it's, if the hangup is the monthly fees, we signed a contract that said eight percent, not monthly fees, so they can get those waived, or they can, it can come out of their eight percent. They can come out of their eight percent. It's a cost to their doing business.
I agree with you.
Well...
We didn't agree.
We never agreed to that. So that's an alternative too, you know, if, if they hang, in the same way with the bank account, although I think the bank account'd be better at Citizens, but...
Yeah.
I'm worried about the credit card, it's another agreement, and, you know, if we're happy with point and pay and they can handle it, why not use it?
Well, and especially if it's segregated.
Yeah, and it's going to be segregated, I mean, it has to be, I would think. So what's your, so, uh...
The, the board would have to authorize the clerk treasurer to actually look into that possibility with not only point and pay, but with LifeQuest and Forte, because if it doesn't work, you need to know that.
Right.
And if you, do you also want me to ask about them waiving the monthly fee?
They need it within their eight percent. Right. I, I mean, in, in any fees, in any fees on, and any fees that are not covered by the convenience fee charged to the customer, I mean, there's, there's a limit on how much that can be too. Some of these bills are fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars, you know?
Right.
Three per, three percent is forty-five, thirty-five, forty-five, fifty dollars.
Well, it's higher on a credit card versus an e-check or a debit, you know...
Right, there might not be anything on an e-check.
It's minimal there, but credit card charges...
Usually an e-check's nothing.
It's a buck.
It's a buck on point and pay?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you never pay credit card? Not at that, not at that rate. Right, people who use point and pay typically use the e-check, right? Okay, so, um, we're looking for a motion to authorize town clerk treasurer to...
To investigate, um, the possible using of point and pay for EMS medical, um, deposits and/or having LifeQuest waive the fourteen ninety-five monthly fee.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll do that tonight, Chief.
And we'll get it, we'll get it, get through this. Now skipping back to, um, resolution twenty twenty zero three, I mean, I, I suppose we can bring this back and, and clean it up.
Yeah.
For two twenty, for February twentieth meeting, I mean, it would be taking out, uh, um, Hometown Bank, and, uh, Paramax is already out, we should probably clear it, clean it up anyway, so we'll get it on, uh, a cleaned up version on February twentieth, um, unless there's an objection. Okay, fire department, Chief Felty. Uh, item H is request for documentation of estimated lights and sirens on personal vehicles, and, uh, item I is resolution twenty twenty dash zero five, resolution to amendment reimburse for town employee, amendment reimbursement for town employees and elected officials, and we had this discussion, um, um... Yeah. Thank you. Maybe this'll be a short discussion.
Should be.
Should be. We had this discussion, I think you and I and Car- clerk treasurer had a discussion before the staff meeting. We talked about, um, expense reimbursement, what it covered and so on, which was, I thought, very helpful. We said, "Come to staff," and you, you did, and we had a discussion there. And I think the new information, or the information that I found new was, um, the expenditures that were being made by individually for, uh, the lights and sirens on their personal vehicles. And I thought, "Well, that's a fair point." I mean, I understand the phone, and I understand the mi- the mileage and all of that, and it hadn't been changed for ten years. The IRS ha- IRS rate goes up and down, but it's, you know, pennies up, pennies down, then it goes up again based on gasoline and, you know, whatever the costs are.
Right.
And perhaps so, there should be an increase for some of that, maybe not fifty dollars a month, because it didn't double, I mean, the mileage rate didn't double, uh, uh, but the, the, um, personal expenses that you don't get reimbursed for is, um, to me, the new information. So, um, unfortunately, I mean, I think you said at the meeting, it was, uh, three to five, and I think when we got to the board meeting, there was a request, um, uh, well, there's a motion to table to get further information, and, uh, but we did adopt it on a three to two vote, and with the, and we did talk to you after the meeting.
Yep.
Karen and I, and you mentioned you had, you were buying a new truck and you had an invoice, and we said, "Well, why don't you send that over and we'll take a, you know, hey, take a look at it and, uh, you know, proceed from there." That's, that's why I put it on the agenda.
Fair enough.
And, um, uh, this is not to embarrass anybody or poke at anybody or...
I think we were very honest and transparent during the budget process about why we wanted to increase it.
Right, but we didn't get into the level of detail that we, you and I got into.
Right, well, I, I agree with that, yes.
So, and at the staff meeting to some degree, so. Uh, we've got two new battalion chiefs, right, are they outfitting their cars too, or are they already outfitted?
They already are.
Okay, and the, the way I kind of looked at it was, well, an extra fifty dollars a month over five years, that's sixty months, that's three thousand dollars, that goes a long way to outfitting your personal vehicle.
Right, but, but I think we kind of got a little sidetracked in terms of someone focused on the, the cost of the lights, where the majority of what we asked for in terms of an increase was for truly the operational cost to just run in a vehicle, the gas, the mileage, uh, the idle time, all those things we talked about. Uh, I think that the town's way ahead in the deal here. I mean, obviously, if we had to go out, as I said earlier, buy four utility vehicles, you're looking at about two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, say again.
You're looking at about two hundred thousand dollars, about fifty grand apiece for our utility vehicles. So I think that there's a, there's an added convenience for, for our members, for our chiefs that, you know, do direct response. It's a little bit of give and take, obviously, and I think that, at the end of the day, I think that the town is, is getting a, a very good bargain for what they're paying for.
Okay, so, you brought in tonight, this is your...
That's just an estimate, right.
Just an estimate?
It's an estimate, but just to give you an idea of what, you know...
What you're like, and that's really what we were, at least I was asking for, I think the board was asking for the, for an estimate. So questions, I mean, obviously, this is new information tonight, so, I mean, just hand it out tonight. So are there a question, I mean, chief's here, so please answer your questions.
This is administrative, um, does, do we have to pay the sales tax?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
This is just an idea, how much...
It's a, it's just a, it's...
It could possibly cost.
Vernon Fire Department. We would have to pay sales tax, yes.
We meaning?
We, us as individuals have to pay sales tax, yeah.
Yeah. They're not doing it under the auspices of the town.
Right.
Is, is all this equipment actually needed on a personal vehicle?
Well, the state statute, it says you have to have three hundred and sixty-degree warning for one-point-five miles. And, um, our vendor does a very good job of making sure that we're in compliance with everything, so that if, uh, God forbid, something would happen or someone would run into the back of your car, we talked about inattentive drivers, um, these are all things that, that meet us into full compliance so that we are an emergency vehicle. Each, uh, chief officer gets a authorization from me that follows state statutes that says that they are an emergency vehicle, and they are regarded the, uh, the rights and privileges of those, uh, those duties.
And so you've already put this on your vehicle, so you have a receipt that you've purchased this already?
I put them in a little video, I don't know where I have the receipt.
Oh, that's your, this is your estimate?
No, 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 that's my estimate.
This is, that's what I thought, okay, I'm sorry. So this is your...
My question was your receipts, from what you just put on your, that was my question. My question was your receipts, from what you just put on your, that was my que, my request last week, or the last time we were here.
It wasn't just put on.
They've been on for a while for, for his truck, so, you know, I mean, someone had asked about when, when one of them was put on, one of them was like four or five years ago. People don't have those receipts. I think at, at this point, we're not talking about, uh, we're not looking for full reimbursement on something, so I don't really think that the receipts are really...
You're looking to get the increase from the hundred to a hundred...
For the actual operating use of the vehicle, right?
Yeah.
Which was, I mean, we've already approved that, so, and again, when we go through the budget process this year, we'll make sure that we correctly identify and request for an increase.
What happens to your old lights that you had?
Some of it's, some of it's just gotten to the point, technology has changed, that it's not going to be reused, it's going to get thrown away.
Things have changed.
Things change all the time.
Headlights and sirens on my car was a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, you got a little cojack light on top of your truck, right? Right?
Thirty, thirty-two Ford.
Right, you know, and, and again, there, you know, there are, there are requirements that, that we have to fulfill, and that's what, what, what we do, and that, when I look at a vehicle, if it doesn't meet the requirements, and you can ask these guys, uh, then they don't get the authorization, uh, letter that, that I give them, and that's, that's something that's required.
And this is being done at their Town of Vernon jobs, not their other jobs, correct?
No, this is just for here.
How many, effects four people?
Four people, four chief officers.
Right, four. Yeah, and I know...
And again...
I know Assistant Chief Hayes, you know, has them on his car, he showed us, but...
You had a demo?
They all do.
Yeah.
Yeah, you had a demo.
Yeah, we believed you. He didn't know how to drive it, but, you know...
It is a cop car.
Yours is?
Cop, his.
I understand.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
It's an interceptor.
Right. We get a lot of phone calls about that. People stop at the firehouse and complain that there's a cop sitting in the median right into, know about, about the Big Bend cop. Because people know there's a sheriff's substation, or they'll stop in and complain about it, you know? Yep.
Let's stay on the agenda here. Any other questions? This is on the agenda for this express purpose to ask questions about these lights and personal... So you spent, I mean, you're spending your own money, I guess, is the point.
At the end of the day, we get, we recoup some of it, but a lot of this is based out of convenience and effectiveness that, you know, the four chiefs are available twenty, basically twenty-four seven when, when they're, they're not working their other jobs, or some people don't have a job, so he's available a lot, and, you know, and we drop, we drop what we're doing to respond to emergency in our communities, so...
Never ends, does it?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
Somebody's got to make them look good.
Mm-hmm. These guys do that very well.
So, this is in the budget?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the fifty dollars, yes, it was in the budget, and we did talk about it, but, you know, we kind of breezed through it, in, in all fairness, so that's why it's coming back up, so, yes, it is in the budget. I would agree with that. I agree with that. It is.
Yeah, it is.
But, that's why we have this resolution here, is that what?
Yeah, that's why, I wanted to, I wanted to go through this first, to make sure that people had an opportunity to look at this estimate and ask questions.
Okay.
So, um, and hear from the chief. So thank you for being here, and Assistant Chief Battalion's here, too. If you have questions for them, we'll ask them questions. Otherwise, we'll go to the Resolution, uh, twenty twenty dash zero five, and that resolution is to amend, uh, the fee schedule for resolutions, which would be increasing the fifty dollars a month for the four.
Was it, was it already approved last meeting? You voted on it in the past?
Well, it was, uh... Did it in a resolution earlier, that, in, in two thousand nineteen, that approved the wages and reimbursements, and at that time...
Oh, okay.
That's my, remember, when I sent you your contract? I did not put the new fees in because I was sleeping and...
Right, that, that, yeah, we have to have a resolution each year to do it, and we do have a resolution, but it's, but it's at the old, it's at the old rate, so to increase it, you have to pass a new resolution or amend the old one.
It just cleans up the reimbursements.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, makes sense.
That's why, that's why that's at the o, but we did have a motion last, last meeting. Right. Other questions? Other questions on six H? So now we're on to six I, which is the resolution.
But, if you're looking, if you're looking for a motion, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash oh five.
Uh, is there a second? I'll second it. Uh, further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Cool.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, maybe you should stay. Can you say for the next one?
Sure, what do you need? Absolutely, whatever you need. Patrick's here.
Yeah, and the reason I just asked that is, um, next item on the agenda is six J, update on National Avenue Bridge Rejecting Project.
Yes.
And, um...
Getting a lot of calls on that.
We're getting calls, and, um, and I put it on the agenda, because we, we, I don't want, before discussion, there's nothing real formal action to take, but, um, as opposed to individual supervisors and DPW giving a report, you know, and, and having a discussion, I, you know, it's better to have it on the agenda, um, and I will see if I can summarize what I know, and then I, I think the clerk treasurer might have some further observations, and maybe the chief or Assistant Chief Hayes might have something to say. But, um, as I understand it, um, in our, and one of our county supervisors, Darlene Johnson, is kind of following this very closely. Um, she's also the supervisor for, for Village of McQuanigo and parts of Town of McQuanigo as far as, and the Town of Vernon, parts of the Town of Vernon. Um, the, the county is out for bids, and they bid, are asking for bids in the alternative of full closure, okay, versus one lane at a time, and that's in process. In, um, in my view, um, we got to look at, see what those bids come back. I think the county has promised us, not a public hearing, but a public information set... A hearing on it. Um, certainly, my suggestion, suggestion to Supervisor Johnson was, "Well, that's great, we should have one, but I think we ought to have one with the municipalities involved first in order to understand so that the, that the government, and we're part of the government, including the county, is, you know, informed, so when we speak to constituents ahead of the meeting, there isn't a lot of misinformation and, and, uh, we're not hearing the, the information at the same time the public is without, and then expect to provide input and thought in process into it." And that would include the Fire Department, DPW, town board members, um, uh, to get, you know, to get the issues out on the table. So I'm glad you stayed, because, um, the issues to me, uh, um, center around Vernon, of course. Um, the Village of McQuanigo, you know, jumped across the river with annexations and development, and if that bridge deck is closed in both directions, it seems to me they're going to be looking to us to provide those services. I understand with the email that you were concerned about mutual aid coming into Vernon, that also is an issue, but I think the bigger issue is, "Hey, wait a minute, are we equipped, uh, to provide, not mutual aid, primary aid to the Village of McQuanigo on our side of the river?"
We are.
So, that's one thing that needs to be discussed, and at whose cost?
Well, and we, and we, we actually, um, already shout, uh, reached out to Chief Stein over in McQuanigo, had a real brief discussion about it, but, obviously, when we start to, to get an idea of where the state's going to go with this project, we're going to start to come up with some contingency plans. You know, we do work together pretty, pretty closely with each other on, on an automatic and mutual aid basis. Um, I think it's going to negatively affect them more than us, unless you shop in McQuanigo, because then you're, I mean, if they close that bridge, we're pretty much cut off. Our only access is to go, what do we talk about, uh, centered down to Maple, all the way up and around, and that's a, that's a considerable delay for us.
You got to get on the freeway, basically.
Or, or get on, or backtrack to get on, onto the freeway, and, and they have a, they have some development there with, with the, the one subdivision. Um, and those are things that I'm, I'm confident we can work out, obviously, uh, really a good cooperative agreement where we're going to help each other. The only challenge we have, and again, it, it's a challenge, but it's not, it's not something that's going to keep us from doing something, is that they're not on the countywide dispatch system. So that creates delays for, um, for responses. Uh, information gets missed and passed along, maybe incorrectly, because you're going from one dispatch center to another, um, but I think that, that we can work and, and make sure that not only is our community protected properly, but also that we can help out our, our neighbors.
But, but that's the kind of information discussion we have to have ahead of this.
Right, and again, I, you know, I don't know, it seemed pretty, I, I don't want to say it's a foregone conclusion, but it seemed like they were pretty adamant about they're going to do a complete deck closure, and they're going to...
I'm not sure that that decision has actually been made.
Well, just based on what they're talking about, how the bids came back twice as much and everything else, and, you know, I, you know, whatever they end up doing, we'll, we're going to have to deal with, obviously. Uh, will, will it be very inconvenient? Absolutely, but I think that we have, we have enough, enough resources in town on our side of the river that we can, uh, make sure that we're, we're protecting our own community, but also helping them out if they need it. And we'll get into the, if we need to get into the cost, or...
Yeah, we might have to.
We have to do something like that, or maybe, maybe we end up doing the, we get the billing revenue for taking the calls, or, you know, we'll figure it out.
I think that's the minimum right there.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. You know, and again, we'll, as, as we get more information, like you said, and we get a little bit more, more of an idea of where we're going with this project, then we'll be able to come up with some contingencies that'll, that'll fit with whatever we need to do.
Right, and on the DPW side, I, I look at what's going to be the official detour route, and where is it going to, going to go, and what's the impact on our town roads, including truck traffic, and then, and how much? Right, so it's going to be a problem.
I'm thinking of, uh, basically, if they do a full close or dock, they probably do it between nights, you know? Otherwise, I mean, it's, it's a place to go on, it's what they're worried about, along the...
Well, and they're up against school, too, they said, right? Something about with, with school, I mean, it's just, logistically, it's, it's a nightmare.
Right, that's the path to the middle school and the high school from Vernon, and Big Bend, I guess, too.
Right. Well, the good news is, I understand, it's all going to go on, theoretically, June through August. In theory. That's what I said, didn't I say that? Right, absolutely. Look what they do with I-94, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but like I said, we will, we'll make sure that we're properly protected, and we have, we have a lot of different options. And, and again, we've got great, great cooperation with us in McQuanigo. We get along with them very well, we work with each other on, on a pretty regular basis, so, um, hopefully, hopefully it won't negatively impact in, in any of our operations.
Do any other comments or questions while we, you know, obviously, it's going to be back on a future agenda as things progress, maybe not next board meeting, but probably in March, because I think those bids are supposed to come in at the end of February, aren't they?
Yes, they went out.
Oh, went out. Oh, they're letting them out, so they haven't even let them out yet?
No.
Oh, okay.
I think so.
Okay. Okay. So, it might be March, April before, but I think they want to start that, I think they want to start that in, in June.
You went, I talked to the, the project manager, and they're not letting the bids till the end of February.
I agree. That's a pretty compressed timeframe.
Right, to get it, get it going by June.
We, we were kind of talking about it, that, you know, last, two, three years ago, when they, they did that deck on, but by ninety-four, they built it, and then they dropped it one night. I mean, so that, you know, there may be ways to, to look at different things, but it would be nice to have some input, because it is going to impact us a little bit.
Right, it's a county road, they're paying for it, but the impacts are local. Questions, any other questions, discussion? Okay. Thank you for staying.
Awesome, no problem. Have a great night, everyone.
You, too.
Unless you want to listen to brush pickup?
Oh, no.
Shall we take a, let's take a five, yeah. Let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back at nine twenty. How's that? It is past nine o'clock. Oh, yeah.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
It's dangerous.
It must be which way, I'm gonna notice that.
Hi, we are in item six K brush pickup and drop-off dates and possible brush pickup fees and wood chip delivery fees. This was discussed at staff, uh, meeting, uh, board meetings, electors' meetings, and, um, so what I would like to do is see how far we can get. We should, we should at least establish, uh, brush pickup, if we're going to do it, and what those dates are. And establish brush drop-off, if we're gonna do it, and what those dates are, so that our residents know, uh, what, what they can expect for 2020. So we'll look at 2020 only, and then if we can get, get those decided, then I think on separate motions, we can go to how much to charge and how to charge it, and for what. So, uh, is the way I would proceed. I, I would be, suggest proceeding if, if no one has any objections to that.
I stand to be corrected.
Stand to be corrected, but I thought that we had pretty well decided that there would be, um, free brush pickup in the spring and a charge for it in the fall. Or some combination of that.
Well, we, I don't think we have, have decided that, and if you, if you would've said we were gonna have brush pickup in May and a drop-off only in the fall, I would say, well, that might be a possibility, because I think that's where the consensus was handling.
It wasn't supposed to be both.
Right.
Not two brush pickups, no.
That's why it's on the agenda to, to establish those dates, because I don't think we've ever established for, you know, by motion and establishing the dates. Because we, we, we went through it at staff, uh, and we discussed it at length, but we did not set those dates at the evening board meeting in January. So I put it on for tonight. So, um, I think we've heard from John, I think, uh, actually, there's an email, email now, um, that if we're looking for pickup, and here's, these are my thoughts on the pickup and drop-off. My thoughts are, we'll do a pickup, and we'll talk about fees after we establish, uh, we'll do a spring 2020 pickup, week one, east of center, May fourth through May eighth, as suggested by our DPW director, and week two, west of center, May eleventh through May fifteenth. That's kind of, I won't say historically forever, but in the recent, you know, twenty years or so or better, that's about when it's been. The idea is, um, you know, crack filling can start late March, depending on the weather, April, you're pretty much done. You wanna get those brush picked up and chipped, so the chips are available for pickup or delivery by Memorial Day.
Prior to Memorial Week.
Prior to Memorial Weekend. So that was the, that's kind of the genesis of the logic behind
The dates.
The dates. And then, uh, we have talked at length about having, and we did last year, fall of 2019, uh, brush drop-off. I think the su, some supervisors have reported favorable comments about that, some complaints, how come you didn't pick up your brush? And I think the fee, the, um, the viewpoint last fall was, hey, if you can get more crack filling done, and we got the Mastech machine, uh, you know, there's lots of subdivisions that have cracks, and they're getting pretty wide, and they're not filled. And, um, um, to me, I'd prefer our DPW, um, to fill those cracks and save our roads. It's much, you know, the number one cost-effective measure to maintain roads, crack fill.
Mm-hmm.
Without question. So, um, that's why I would, to me, don't pick it up in the fall, crack fill, have a drop-off for those who can do it. I know, understand that not everybody has trailers or trucks, or is physically able to do it, but if we, say you can get it picked up by the town in the spring, once a year. So that was my theory, and, you know, we've discussed it at meetings. And so that's, you know, I'm looking for, you know, board input and their, their viewpoints on it. Everybody has talked to a bunch of residents on these issues.
The, the dates on that would be, like, we'll do two Saturdays.
Right.
And then that, the whole week.
Right, two Saturdays, seven to noon, and then, and then the weekend, the weekdays in between, not on Sunday, the weekdays in between during, basically, business hours, seven to three.
Correct.
Which is about what we, didn't we do that last fall about that? Yeah, same kinda thing, about the same time period, first of October.
Yeah, yeah. It's always the first week in October, first week in May.
And we had some positive comments on that.
Yes.
And it's, and, and, um, so wood chip delivery, um, we try to get that done before Memorial Day, and, um...
Well, September's before that, actually, so.
Right.
Well, yeah.
In, in the spring.
In the spring, sorry.
Right, and then, um... And then in the fall, I don't know how many requests you had for delivery.
It was pretty slow last year, yeah.
So, most of the delivery requests are in the spring.
Yes.
So, comments, questions, thoughts?
I think we should have the brush pickup in the spring. And, I don't know what the right word is, mulch them or grind them up or whatever, and then let the residents take care of bringing it in, uh, in the fall.
So brush drop-off.
At the town.
In the, at the town hall in, in the fall.
In the fall.
As, 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 with the dates and times.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the periods are really more up to John, but that's relative to what it was.
Yeah, this is what I would like to see.
Yeah.
Supervisor Wiley, thoughts?
I agree a hundred percent.
Supervisor Dashick?
Well, I agree with the brush pickup in spring. I still think the residents enjoyed one later in the year also, and since I vowed that I would always vote for that, I would say that I would vote for that. Um, and then I think there should be no fee also for the spring brush pickup.
Okay, so let's, let's, can we establish the dates and times first, and then we'll, we'll go to the, we'll go to the fees.
Can I ask for clarification? You're suggesting a brush pickup in the spring and the fall?
I, I miss, I'm sorry. I am suggesting it, but I, I know.
No, no, just tell me what you said before, that's all I wanna...
Uh, I think the residents would appreciate both.
Okay.
Not necessarily October, maybe even end of August, I don't know, whenever it would work. But I'm sure they'll appreciate having it in spring, for sure.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That's all right.
Okay. So, um, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion that, uh, we establish, uh, brush, a spring brush pickup, um, a spring 2020 brush pe, pickup, uh, week one, May fourth through May eighth, east of center, uh, Center Drive, uh, week two, May eleventh through May fifteenth, west of Center Drive. And then a fall 2020 drop-off, brush drop-off, um, Saturday, no, October third, and Saturday, October ten, from seven a, seven AM to noon. And, uh, the week of October five through October nine, seven AM to three PM, drop-off to be at Town Hall, in areas designated by the DPW director.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the mo-
Oh, you made the motion?
Yeah, I just, yeah.
I'm sorry, then I'll second. Thank you, Karen. Oh, sorry, Clark Supervisor, sorry.
Okay.
Our treasurer.
We had discussion, any further discussion on the dates and time?
Well, the only thing, are, are fees gonna be covered later, or is...
That'll be next.
Okay.
I wanted to at least get the dates established.
Okay, that's fine.
And what we, and what the, um, what we're planning on doing. Okay, any, any further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Yay! Just so they have the dates.
I'm not opposed to this, doing this, I just think it would be better if we had two brush pickups.
Residents are calling just for the dates. They don't care what, they just, what, what's going on, so they're really happy.
They need to know what's going on. I mean, it's been, you know, we changed course last year, and, uh, big time last year with fees and the drop-off versus pickup, and now we need to get it established. Now, let's talk about the fees. Okay, so let's talk about, should we do the easiest one first, the wood chip delivery fees?
Yeah.
This is for delivery. Wood, wood chip pickup is free, you got a truck or a trailer. Somebody's around, they'll actually put a, get the front end loader and dump it in your trailer.
Correct.
Or in the back of your pickup, I suppose. Um, otherwise, I think last year, we started delivery, charging a delivery fee of thirty dollars. It's prepaid, and they fill out a form and dump it here, and all of that. Uh, thirty dollar... Thirty dollars is like, just last year, wasn't it?
Last year was the first.
First year, oh, yeah.
Wasn't it?
It was, it was free before that.
It was free? Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it was two years ago.
And, and, um, from my personal experience, people, I think we had one person complain about the delivery fee, but, you know...
Buy it someplace else and pay a hundred and fifty.
Right. Right, and, and, you know, the quality of the wood chips is whatever the residents are dropping out there, so, um, uh, so, uh, a, any, anybody feeling on that? Obviously, the fee, you know, uh, people say, oh, I don't wanna pay the fee, they're not gonna get it. Our, our risk is, you got a big pile up there, but on Memorial Day weekend, and it's not, it's still sitting there.
And, and we do accumulate some over time, you know, we're doing our own brush pickup too, plus I still have a half a pile from this fall, so, it'll be good.
Supervisor Dashick?
Oh, are we in discussion? Yes, I wanna bring up this levy limit law, that you cannot impose higher fees on the residents if you're already at your levy limit.
Well, there is so... Yeah, yeah, I don't, I...
Sixty-six oh six zero two.
I don't have the statute.
Is that for a tax levy?
Yep.
Are you saying your levy for your tax, did you really tax it?
On or after July second, two thousand thirteen, if a municipality adopts a new fee or a fee increase for covered services which were partly or wholly funded in two thousand thirteen by property tax levy, that municipality must reduce its levy limit in the current year by the amount of the new fee or fee increase.
So this would've been, if this applied, wouldn't have Howard?
And John. I mean, that correlates to when you're doing your tax, your tax bills?
Oh, you're saying the fees, you can't shift, you can't shift a fee to the property tax, like, if you picked up garbage forever, you know, always, and then... Well, right, other than, that's right, it's not on the agenda, other than getting clarification about our tax levy. And it's, and I think what that means is, if you shift from taxes on your tax bill to a fee, like, for example, you always picked up garbage for free, and then you said, nope, we're gonna charge a hundred and fifty dollars for garbage, so you could have a hundred and fifty dollars more in your taxes. I think that's what prevents that from happening, but to charge for services like chips, wood chip delivery, I don't, I think we can, I, I'm not sure that that covers it.
It doesn't, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it does, but, yep. Um, and it would've, it would've applied last year, which should've been brought, I mean, uh, you weren't, you and I weren't part of the board last year, but last year being in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen tax.
Well, yeah, franchise, well, none of these fees should be allowed.
Well, the franchise fees has been around longer than last year. That started the year before, but...
Anything...
But again, that, that's a fee, that's a fee that's not being shifted on your tax bill. In other words, it's not, it's, they're not reducing taxes and putting on a special fee and charging everybody, they're just charging people with getting pickup. But we can get that further clarified, but I don't think it applies, yeah.
Well, I think you should ask for a legal opinion on that.
We can talk to John or Howard, maybe, yeah. Um, okay, so, we're back on, back on, um, wood chip delivery fees. Delivery only.
Could somebody edify me as to what's been going on in the recent past for fees or whatever?
Well, up to a couple of years ago, we, it was never a fee for
Delivery.
Delivery.
Okay.
And then, I know, like, the city of Waukesha, they charged thirty bucks a, a load.
No, I'm just talking, just talking, Karen.
Right, so then that, that came up, they're trying to get rid of the whole brush pickup for cost reasons, uh, to offset some of that cost for fuel, they decided to charge a fee for delivery.
This board.
Thirty dollars. So, the previous board.
That's, yeah, oh, sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're at with that, yeah.
Right. And then at that same time, they, they decided to charge thirty dollars to pick the brush up. And that first took effect in the spring of twenty nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Was the first year for either fee. Twenty eighteen, it was not charged.
I think you're right, yeah.
So that's the history.
'Cause in my opinion, I, I don't think there should be a charge for the brush pickup in the spring, okay? Deliveries and all the rest of that stuff, fine, but I think there's, uh, some subdivisions and property owners that really don't have a work place where to put this stuff. Some of us do, uh, but for those that don't, I think it would be a... And I don't believe that they should sign up and pay in, have a fee in advance, because we're gonna go through that whole folder all again, okay, that you had to deal with last year, which you had indicated before was kind of interesting, with, with the residents, okay? And then it was, where the brush pile was, was it on this property or that property, and, so I think it would make it a lot easier, a lot easier just to pick it up in the spring.
Okay, so let's, let's see if we can stay focused here, it's, you know, getting late. On the wood, this is just wood chip deliveries, and then we're gonna talk about brush pickup.
Oh, I thought we were on both.
Well, we could be, but it, isn't it be easier to...
Oh, you do what you want.
Yeah, let's see if we can compa, car, car, put it in a compartment or a box, one by one, just to, just to herd it on. Now, um, so on delivery, I heard you, Supervisor Maholic, thirty dollars reasonable for delivery-free pickup. Supervisor Wiley?
Delivery-free pickup?
If you come here and you can pick them up for free.
Right, right. Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
If you want them delivered by the town, it's thirty dollars, you can drive your truck or your trailer, and you can pick them up for free. These are wood chips now.
Right.
Supervisor Dashick, against all fees, or are you...
No, I'm against all fees.
Okay, against all fees. Supervisor Wiley?
Go along with the thirty-dollar pickup and the free, uh, pick up your own.
Pick up your own for free?
Fred's, Fred's idea, yep.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
What did you just say?
I agree with you.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion to, uh, charge a, a wood chip delivery fee prepaid, paid in advance of thirty dollars, uh, what do we call it, a truckload?
Truckload, yeah.
Truckload, um, or, um, residents can come in and with their own vehicles and trailers, pick up for no charge. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Just talking about wood chip deliveries, right now.
Discussion?
Yep.
Um, this was my concern back when I was here, is there, what is the liability for delivering wood chips, driving on somebody's property, and either making a rut or cracking asphalt or...
They sign off on it.
Yeah, they sign off.
They do sign off, thank you, there's a waiver, that's fine.
They're at all with the insurance company for a good point.
Don't worry about any discussion, that's...
Right, there's a form that they sign, there's a little, you draw a little picture of your driveway, and you put an X in there.
That's fine, that's fine. That's fine, that's fine.
Fury dress and all of that.
Don't waste.
There's a disclaimer on the, on the chips itself.
Don't waste any more time on it.
Yeah, the chips are whatever you get, including any mushrooms and bugs and anything else. Okay, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, three to one, motion carries. Okay, now we will talk about brush pickup fees, and this would only apply to the spring pickup because there is no fault, we just passed a motion, no fall pickup. Okay, so, um, brush pickup fees, we had them at thirty dollars last year. What happened? Um, brush pickups went way down by seventy-five percent, okay, first of all. Second, um, it wasn't prepaid, and so bills went out. A lot of times, John's people were struggling to figure out whose it was. We, uh, billing the wrong people or the neighbor or whatever, and, um, people then complained, they, they didn't know that they were gonna get charged a fee, they complained, oh, it was just a little bundle, I saw the guy just pick it up when he scooped it up and threw it in, why do I have to pay thirty dollars for that? We had numerous complaints, um, uh, all summer, it was on our agenda, um, practically every meeting in the summer at some point, and, um, I think we all received, not Supervisor Mahalik, but I think we all received complaints, um, uh, from residents about that fee. That's kind of the, um, background of what happened, um, about the fee, and of course, the arguments for the fee is not everybody uses it, uh, if you don't charge a fee, then the taxpayers are paying for it all, counter to that is, well, there's a lot of things taxpayers pay for, at our parks, uh, whether they use them or not, uh, schools, that's the school district, but the same argument would go for that, uh, the fire department provides free services, that is, if they don't transport anybody and don't provide medical care, they don't charge for that, and yet they got the ambulance out at the person's house, um, um, as another example of a service the town of Vernon, uh, provides to its residents without charge. And so, uh, then we went to, um, in the, in October, we said, no more picking up the brush, we'll just have a drop off and, and avoid the fee issue altogether, otherwise we'd be talking about fees again tonight on the agenda and the same, same complaints. And then we had an electors meeting that we did discuss it at length, and I think, uh, we had a little bit of, you know, transcript here, um, and this is how I, I remember it, um, and I think, um, you know, the people that were left, and I agree that this was a long meeting, and the first item on the agenda took, that item took over two hours and it ended up getting tabled, and, um, and then we went to a corporation, um, on the agenda because that was informational only, that was not even voting, and then, uh, at the end, we talked about this particular item, and I was trying to move the meeting, and we didn't get done with our town board till like, one o'clock that night. Um, but I think, I think the, what we just passed, the once in the spring and so on, um, uh, twice a year was against it, most people here that were against it, now, obviously, the people here, not everybody in the town is voting, it's whoever was here, uh, but it is an indication, I suppose, and, um, and when I called for a, a hand count on no charge for pickup, I mentioned, and it was, we didn't count, but it was pretty overwhelming, otherwise we would've counted. I said, looks like those who want some type of charge carried the motion, so we were, town people who were here said, yeah, charge for it. And then, and then the next question is, how much should the fee be? And I started at eighty dollars seventies, or eighty, sixty, fifty, forty, and, um, um, when we hit forty, I think there was one, and my comment was, at least he was consistent, that's a comment to Mr. Noak, who during discussions said, I'd pay forty dollars, which everybody gave him a dirty look, in the audience, um, and then when I got to thirty, pretty many. And so, at that point, we're, people were in favor, the people here were in favor of charging a fee, and then the question was, well, how much? And so, thirty, it was, it was pretty much, uh, people who were raising their hands in the room, and then I said, well, what about twenty? And I announced, well, if you're willing to pay thirty, you should be willing to pay twenty, and your, the same amount of hands should be up, and then I stopped. But we didn't count, it was getting late, we didn't count people, but that's, the thirty dollars, kind of, I remember it, I don't know, Supervisor Dashick and Supervisor Wiley, you were here too.
Right.
Um, remembered, um, um, uh, that's pretty much how I remember that people were stuck at thirty. Even though we had up on the board, you know, the statistics and how much it costs, that little chart that you had, and, um, you know, the year before when we weren't charging, you know, you divided it out, it might've been thirty-five dollars, but then when you start, we charged, you know, with, with reduction of seventy-five percent or something thereabouts, so pickups, you know, then the actual cost, because now you have all this fixed cost, and they're running, whether they're picking up or not, and the fuel is running, just, and it's, you divide it out, that's why I started at eighty, because it turned out to be eighty, so.
That's just it.
Yeah, so it's not, you're not charging the full rate, it's an offset at best. So then, um, uh, um, the wood chip delivery fee passed, you know, so we, we just decided that, um, so that's kind of how that meeting went, and it was at the end, I mean, it was getting very, very late, I will, will say that, and then they, they talked about whether something wa- was going to be prepaid, and, um, that was, you know, I think, I mentioned that because of all the complaints we had, and all the, um, problems, uh, DPW workers trying to decide who to bill, the clerk's office, and the, I mean, we're sending up, people don't pay their bill, and they send it again and again, we have a, a bunch of people who have still haven't paid. And they still haven't came in, and then all the people complained, and all the people who came in about their emailing and wood chip fees, so, to me, I don't wanna go through that again, that complaint process again, because I don't, you know, by the time you add up all the extra time involved, I mean, if you just do it for free, you could save all that time and save all the money that the time represents at that point. And if you make people prepay, here's the problem I see with prepaid, that'd be great, but then what is John gonna go, he knows what the address is, and we can put him on a chart by address on a street, so he knows which ones to go by, but then he's driving by people who didn't prepay, and they don't know, and then they're gonna call, hey, wha- how come you didn't pick up mine? And then a suggestion was made was, well, if you drive by, put a little sticker on or tag on it, well, that means the guy says, okay, I'll prepaid, then you're gonna have to come back and get it again?
Mm-hmm.
How efficient is that gonna be? I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a solution either.
I'd like to go through town one time, we could do it one week, each, either side of town. Go through one time and that's it, no going back.
Right, no going back, 'cause you go back, then it's.
You do that, and I just created a whole nother week's worth of work, so.
Right.
He gets about thirty calls, hey, you missed me.
Yeah.
They didn't have it out.
Oh, yeah, I get that every year already, from people throwing it out after we already went past.
Right.
You know?
That happens every year, anyway.
It happens every year.
Well, here you're gonna be, if you make people prepaid, you're gonna be driving by those who did not, and then you're gonna have people mad about that and complaining about that, and they're gonna say, well, I'm just gonna leave them there then, 'cause what's gonna happen, right?
And we can save them.
So.
Can I call the questions?
So, uh, yeah, so that's the background, you can call the que- no motion's been made. Anybody, you wanna give thoughts first, or you wanna make a motion that we do it for free, or do it for thirty, or do it for whatever?
I'd like to make a motion that we do it for free in the spring only.
Okay, that's all we have scheduled. Okay, is there, is there, so this is the, do brush pickup, spring, spring brush pickup for no additional charge?
Correct, spring only.
Spring only. Is there, is there a second?
Well, I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Now, I, I basically am not in favor of, 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 of a free pickup, but only for the chance now to clear this whole thing up, where it's been a mass of confusion, extra work in the clerk's office, extra work for John, when he goes out there, who do I get? Who do I not get, whether we prepaid or not? I think I would have to go along with a motion that, that, the spring breakup, let's go back, and spring brush pickup will have to be done for free.
Okay. Further, any further discussion, you made the motion Supervisor Mahalik.
I was just gonna, little discussion, you indicated that I didn't get any calls, and that was because I wasn't in office. I just wanted to make people, make people think I am getting calls from the residents, okay?
Sorry about that, I thought I made that clear, but sorry about that.
No, you did not, you just said I didn't get any calls.
Okay, right, because you were not yet in office.
That is correct, thank you.
Supervisor Dashick, anything to add before we call the question?
No, I don't have anything more to add.
Okay, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yay!
We're so happy you guys made a decision. You can always research.
Heck, I made that decision a long time ago.
What was that?
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad we got through it, and I do, and I, I do understand, you know, the reasons for and against it, but I think the reasons against charging are simply because it's, it's just too, the, the, the additional work and complaints, it's just not, not worth it.
Well, he told one story about the brush being virtually on, I'm gonna call it the property line, was it that property owner or that property owner, and you got into a hissy fit as to who should be paying the fee? And I thought, you know, just silly.
Okay.
Not the brush pickup, but.
Okay, moving through the agenda, six L newsletter and possible separate mailing for town news. I put this on, 'cause I want everybody to start, we put it on last time, um, we've gotta figure out a plan for this, um, I suppose we don't necessarily have to decide it tonight, but, um, I think we gotta give, get some consensus on.
You're probably gonna, if you're gonna do your May, you, you have to have that newsletter done in March.
Right, so, here, here's, yep.
Sorry, Karen, when? When in, when in March?
Well, sometime, probably early March, uh, that's where the chairman is indicating, only because it takes time to get everybody's articles together, Tammy to put it together, and then, you know, having it printed.
I don't need you explaining, it's just timing.
Right, it, that's what we're talking about, timing. Yeah, it takes a little while to get the articles in, get it.
Approved by the town board.
And approve, and coming back, approved by the town board, getting it to the printer, and getting the printed and.
It's collated and tabbed and addressed and.
And that, you're right, that, that process will take.
At least three weeks, you know, for the, the printer and stuff, and, and just so the board knows, I know we had a lot of compliments on the last newsletter with the type of paper, and we did, I did bid that out to at least four different printers, and we, we got the best price for, as far as I'm concerned, Crossmark Graphics, the best printer. Sorry, commercial.
So, I just wondered if they're getting your articles together?
Um, and as far as the timing goes, um, I think what I, my philosophy on it, and I tried to do that in my article, is this town board newsletter should be town board news. I mean, I have an example, I should've brought it tonight, of the spring of twenty eighteen, where it was devoid of town board news, and all it was filled with was the news, like, here's your park and rec form, the news that it comes in every newsletter, and not news to what have we been doing the last six months? Um, and the town's been doing a lot the last six months, and we did some tonight, um, the incorporation and the incorporation update, we talked about timing on that, and, um, will probably, if the DOA takes the whole ninety days into March, if it's, doesn't have to go back for revision, into March, we'll be, we'll have our border agreements up or down.
Or you could write an article one way or another, you know, I mean.
So we can just assert it, right.
In anticipation to, you know, have the board approve, you know, the article, because, uh, even though the chairman dedicated the last newsletter, I can't tell you how many people, there's so much, and you almost have to keep educating people, because there's a lot of misconception on, on this particular incorporation statute that you're using.
What's fascinating to me is that people have approached me on this, okay, and there's no huff or puff when, when they come up, and I explain to them what it is, and they're all very happy with it, and they walk away.
Well, and I explained to them that it was, it was explained in great detail in the newsletter, and they said, I never saw it.
It's gonna have to, my thought on that is, it basically, it's not gonna be the same article, but I think it's gotta be on the front page and explain the incorporation again.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
I, I don't know what else to do, it's the most important issue the town of Vernon as a town is going to face in its history.
I agree.
This vote.
I would not be opposed to a separate mailing too shortly before that election to, because people have said to me, you have to inform us, and I'm thinking, well, we're doing everything we can, you know, the newsletter has it, but, you know, they want it mailed to their house specifically.
But the newsletter is mailed to their house.
I know, I know, but just this, yeah, I don't know, maybe just to this special referendum. People need a special mailing, this is so important. This is our vote to incorporate the town, we'll never have this chance again.
You're gonna have to do a spec- if, if, if the town gets to that point where you are going to referendum, you're gonna have to do a special mailing, above and beyond the newsletter.
Right.
I think, I think it would be so worth it.
Yes.
And important.
Right, so, so we're looking, we're looking at the DOA on the timing towards the end of March, so if we can get our articles in, by March fifteenth, I can kind of see where we are in DOA, and then get the board approval towards that last board meeting in March, and then get it out and. Yeah, now that, that brings up the spring brush pickup, which is the other issue. And then, so then, that's why I was, and we'll get Cal Magnum here on February twentieth, he's.
Yeah, he's coming.
He's coming, hopefully without the coronavirus or anything.
And we'll find out then too, if we can do an insert there.
Yeah, see, if we can do an insert there.
We can do the brush pickup there, then it'll be better.
Put the brush pickup in everybody's property tax notice, that's get sent to everyone in an envelope to their address.
That's great, yeah.
If we could get it put in there, we could put a flyer about brush pickup.
And if I could work with Cal, we could design an envelope that has special important, you know, like a, a sticker on the outside of an envelope, so they know that it's important tax assessment in town news.
So that would be a good, to me, if we can do that, we could get a brush pickup flyer, so everybody would know about the May dates.
That would be ideal.
Otherwise, we could, we're gonna put them in the newsletter too, but if that newsletter comes in, I'm thinking shortly after the April elections.
Yep.
So we could put the new town board members on there and the election results and.
Yep.
So.
But you'd be kinda getting so close to brush pickup.
Pickup time, right? So, I mean, we put it there too, but, so I'm hoping that we could get a flyer in with Cal's stuff. That's why we ask, and that's why we ask him to come.
And he's checking on that.
He's checking.
You're probably ahead of me on this, but it'll also be up on the, uh, our webpage.
Facebook, our Facebook page.
Sites, Facebook, all that stuff, okay, thank you.
We could even do signs, free spring.
You know, believe it or not, the, the brush doc, drop off signs that you guys put out, I got complaints about that. How much do they cost, and why are we wasting our money on the signs? And you got opposites saying, hey, thanks for telling us.
It's about time, why didn't you ever do this before?
So I, I can't win.
Can't win.
You can't win, I mean, I, you know, not like, you know, people are entitled to their opinions, you just don't have to be so angry about it.
That's exactly.
Um, so we're gonna check on that, uh, that's kind of the ti- those are the two timing things, it's the incorporation and the, of course, the, you know, town service brush pickup.
Well, they just have to get their articles.
And get your articles in, and I would like reporting on news, and we'll do something for the plan commission between the, you know, town clerk and I, we'll get plan commission, the new subdivisions and things like going on in the plan commission, we'll get an article about that, like we did before. I think people like that too. Um, so, no need to, for formal action, I don't think, we just need to start working on your articles so they're ready to go in March. And we'll check with Cal next week, our next board meeting, and I think putting a flyer together on the brush pickup is easy, so.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And then, I suppose, depending on what else we could put in there, we could put in sanitary district, Tiff's district, we could put an incorporation flyer in there too, if we wanted.
Depending on what we can do.
Depending on what we can do. And we just have to be careful, uh, what the town. And we just have to be careful, uh, what the town does, you know, Macy, Attorney Macy will say, you can't, you know, you can't campaign. If you're gonna put out information, it's gotta be factual, to the point. Not vote this way or that way, but gotta provide information, and then it's okay. Just need to be careful about that. Uh, okay, anything else on that? Otherwise, we will go to correspondence and announcements at ten o'clock. I want to start Supervisor Wildy with.
Uh, no, you covered the, the, where I got a lot of questions was on the bridge closure. Um, that's been handled, so I won't go into that. But I did have a couple of questions from a couple of residents who indicated that advanced disposal has changed their pickup times. Um, I don't know if they've changed routes, but my subdivision, uh, they always used to come between ten thirty, eleven o'clock. Today, they were there at quarter to seven, and last week it was about seven o'clock. Um, I'm just wondering if, if you can find out for me why, why they, why they changed their routes, you know? Because people get into a habit, they put their garbage cans either out at night, or they wait like I always did. Last week, I was running down the driveway in my pajamas, big, trying to catch up with the, with the garbage truck, and I just made it, you know? So I was amazed as that they were there, and today they were there even earlier, so I need to find out. A couple of, um, my residents in my subdivision called me and asked me to find out if, if the routes have been changed, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, Supervisor Mahalik.
Uh, I'll do it with Supervisor Wildy said regarding, uh, the bridge, okay? Getting enough questions on the bridge, and indicated that we'll be getting more information in the foreseeable future. And the other thing is also with the garbage pickup. Ours was always around four, five o'clock. Okay? This morning, it was seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't care, alls I wanna know is, when are you guys coming? I don't care when it is, just set a pattern for your time, so that the resident's gonna get adjusted to it.
Yep, I agree with, that's exactly what we were looking at. Supervisor Dashik, I'm just writing notes.
Well, the only calls I had were from people requesting the free brush pickup in spring, so.
You have some good news for them.
This is good news for them, you're gonna get it.
Karen, can I go back and add that? Brush, free brush pickup? I apologize.
No problem.
Thank you.
Uh, Chairman Report, um, we pretty much covered it on the agenda. I will say, um, on the, I had not heard the advanced disposal changing route time, so I think that's helpful. Uh, we are joined.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
The, um, as a point of information, and this will be on the, um, February twentieth agenda, if we can meet with advanced disposal ahead of time. Their contract, just so everybody knows, their contract expires at the end of this year. So their contract is up, and they've, um, by email requested a, a meeting to discuss extension, extending the contract. So, um, uh, it's for the end of the year. I, I prefer these contracts be not wait till the end of the year. I think we should, if we're, we should start talking now. That's why it's going to be on the agenda, and I just wanted to put that in my report. And that just, request just came in this week, and if nothing, if there's nothing to decide on twentieth, we'll put it on just for information so we can discuss it further. Um, otherwise, um, uh, we did meet, uh, town clerk, uh, clerk treasurer and I, as well as the town attorney and town planner, did meet with, uh, Waukesha County on the Hibbert, Heaven City property. Uh, there will be, um, uh, a joint, I think we decided to join town board plan commission, just so everybody's aware, in March, on the March plan commission, uh, date, so mark your, uh, calendar on that. There will be a conditional use, um, you know, he needs to amend his conditional use, so the rules regarding talking to him about it apply, so do not talk to him about it. So I wanted to give everybody a heads up and let everyone know that, uh, we did have this meeting.
March eleventh.
Yeah, March eleventh.
Wednesday, March eleventh.
Right. Uh, I think that's it for my report. DPW report?
Uh, I just got a few things here from, uh, what we've been up to. We had eleven snow events in January, a couple ice storms, obviously. That puts us up to twenty events for the season. Uh, just in January alone, we had, uh, four hundred and twenty-seven tons of salt we used. And received seven hundred tons of salt out of the thirteen hundred that we have ordered for the year so far, so we've got another six coming. So we shouldn't have a problem accommodating that. Um, and Gary, you mentioned the anti-icing that we've been up to, uh, experimenting, you know, getting that on, on the roads when we had these prolonged periods of time with no salt on the roads. It's good to get something down there. Uh, otherwise, we've been doing a lot of tree work. I got that oak tree on Evergreen taken care of, that one that was overhanging, I know, yeah, was brought up a few times. But we've been, all right, pretty much keeping up on that tree work. I gotta meet with, uh, We Energies tomorrow at, uh, Fire Station Two, actually, I talked to Pat, he might fill in for me there. They're changing the, um, service, the gas meter there, just upgrading the new, putting a new meter on the firehouse. So, Pat said he could possibly meet up there, take care of that. And then we did have the bid opening for our paving program today, out of the four bids that we've, uh, received. Painted Owen was the, the leading bidder, uh, and he doesn't have the numbers exactly yet. He's gonna try and break it up from, uh, the River Oaks area project to the Center Drive project, and see if he can separate those. They didn't really break those up in the bid, but he says he, he can kind of do that the way they bid it, uh, just so we can see how much we actually saved by rebidding that with this year's program. I think we, we're coming pretty far ahead on that whole situation. Actually, we're, I, I threw in Para Avenue, just for the fun of it, if we have extra money, if that, if that, um, program comes in, we underbid up there, um, we could maybe do a little more on the south end by River Oaks. Uh, Para Avenue was an extra. So, I mean, that was just something that we put in there just to see what that would come up at. But otherwise, Painted Owen was deflated a little better, so same as, uh, what they did last year's also.
Are we gonna need that on the agenda next time?
Yes, uh, he's gonna come up with some numbers, he's hoping, I have a whole bid tabulation and a recommendation letter for the, for the next meeting.
Are you coming, John?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come for that, for the, uh, February twentieth meeting.
So you're ready for, okay, awarding the bids?
Yes, to award the bids, so we can kind of keep that moving along, get a, a schedule with them for that, so. But like I said, we're trying to see what, what the, uh, that section and the other section, kind of break it up and come up with some exact numbers for you guys, so.
We're gonna have a good agenda on the twentieth.
It, uh, bids came in pretty in our favor, I think, I just.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I think we're, we're a lot lower than expected, put it that way.
Just clarification, John, you said center, uh, is that the one, Center and Skyline?
Correct. Yeah, that's a whole different section. I was hoping they were gonna break that up, but they, they kind of lumped it all together with their bidding, and that's how we kind of plan on that, to get a lower bid for that whole project, so. And he's gonna try and break it up as much as he can, to see how much we saved on that, so.
Right, it'd be good to get the details.
Yeah, that's what I told him, I'm curious, and he's curious also.
Right.
You know, so, to see what we.
It'll help us in the future, no, anyway. Yeah, we should probably make that a requirement of the bid, that they.
Well, like I said, they did break that other section up that I put in at the end, just.
Yeah.
They put that as a addendum. I mean, he didn't put that in there as that.
Right.
You know, so. Otherwise, that's, that's all I got, so.
Okay.
I got, I got a question of John. Um, John, in regard to, um, the, this company that comes in and does the tree trimming for the electric lines, Os, Aspen or?
Asplun, yes.
Yeah, they, they are being exceedingly messy.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, I mean, we could, we can put it on the, put it on the agenda, or.
Yeah.
You know, maybe what we'll have is, we could put it on the two twenty agenda, and then, and then John can maybe look into that, what you're, you're saying, they're, they're.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people calling me too.
They're, they're trimming, uh, under the electrical wires and they're not cleaning up, is basically what you're saying, okay.
Exactly.
John will give you their response.
I can tell you what the response is gonna be.
Yeah, tough.
I saw him in the, I saw him in the parking lot the other day here.
Yeah, they're actually storing one of their, uh, units here.
Oh, okay.
They've got, uh, flashing signs, uh, that they use for flagging, and they just, they're storing it here, so.
Yeah, and speaking of We Energies, I apologize, in my report, I should've, I should've mentioned, I did receive a letter, which, um, I don't know if I gave that to the clerk, or maybe she got her own, but if, if I didn't, I have it from We Energies, just saying, stay off our right aways. Stay off our right aways. So, that's, um, came to the town, so. Um, and clerk treasurer report?
Um, I just wanted to remind the residents that absentee voting has started in the clerk's office. Clerk's hours are from, um, eight to three thirty. Um, I did, in my notice, if you cannot make those dates, um, I can make appointments. So if you can't make, if you need a Saturday or Sunday, which I do a lot for a lot of our law enforcement officers, please call me, and I can set up an appointment for you. Just a reminder, I'm getting a lot of calls on this, the town board has not approved any peddler's permits. So if you do have a peddler, come to your home, please call the non-emergency number at the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department. Also, the spring deadline for, uh, the recreational program is February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. And also, just a reminder for residents, advanced disposal in their contract, you are required to have your garbage out at six thirty Wednesday, by, you know, it's by six thirty in the morning on Thursday morning, or Wednesday evening. They change their routes at, there's no, they will not give you a time for pickup, so to, for a reminder for residents, you are required under our contract to have your garbage cans out by six thirty in the morning. And if they're, I, just so you know, because they have to change their routes based on what happens in other communities, truck breakdowns, personnels, um, but just, just a reminder, under our contract, your garbage can has to be out, or, and refuse and recycling can by six thirty that morning. Even if you're used to a five o'clock pickup, that's, that's what, that's how our contract reads.
Okay.
You were focusing on Wednesday, Thursday, but you're talking Monday through Friday, right?
No, you have to have your garbage and recycling cans out at six thirty in the morning on Thursday morning.
That's the only day.
That's the only day they pick up in Vernon.
Oh, okay. I thought that just happened to be our day, I'm sorry.
No, it, the entire town.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Just, just, just so everybody knows.
Thank you.
And, and they're not required, you're getting some emails on private roads, they are not required to go up a private road, just so, yeah, just so you know. Yay, sorry, that's it?
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, finances, accounts payable.
Yeah, you can, can I say bye to John?
Bye, John.
Bye, John.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck on Sunday.
Where are you going? Where are you going on Sunday?
Snow.
Snowy.
Hi, Johnny.
And there are certain driveways that are on Evergreen that might get plowed in. Is that the right street?
That's right.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve batch two zero two, zero zero two oh six, in the amount of seventy thousand, six thirty two oh one. You ask, why can I approve that so quickly? The clerk's office, okay, has generously given us copies of all this, they've been reviewed at home. I have but one question, and it's just for, uh, tell me what it is. Uh, shoot, where did my, I'm sorry, I knocked my rubber band off. Um, I'll skip it. Pass.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, discussion. Okay, I, I had some questions, which I've already, uh, talked to the clerk treasurer about, one, we had a missing invoice which was supplied. Um, the other is, we did have one question on, um, the town attorney's, uh, invoice, um, and we, we were gonna follow, you know.
I am, just, since we're under APs, I am gonna send that back to, um, Pauline to ask John. I did not ask about that, when it says clerk ATC or something? And I, I, just so you know, I mean, if I ask the town attorney something, I usually always copy the board on what I'm asking them, or, so I, I do have a question. I know it's only sixty dollars, but I didn't want you to think I asked without your permission.
Well, at, wouldn't those, you wouldn't have to ask the board, but you talked to the chair correctly?
But, and usually when I say something to the.
But no, in a conversation with the attorney, you talk to him, you don't get the board approval.
No, I'm, I'm with the town chair when we're all talking together.
Okay, all right.
Okay, this is, this is, um, we were questioning, um, there's a charge at the very beginning of, um, municipal law and litigation group for sixty dollars, uh, on December seventeenth, and the, and the heading is ATC. I'm not sure, ATC's American Transmission Company or something, I'm thinking, and, and, you know, it says, review correspondence, town clerk, uh, ATC locations. Well, I, personally, I never got any letter or correspondence or anything, and neither did the town clerk, so I'm wondering what, what he's reviewing, and it could just be simply a mistake, he, he put it on the wrong ledger. And so, uh, my only, my only question there, I mean, we, we can approve these, but I think we need, we can follow up on that, and, and if it's an appropriate charge, you'll, you'll give us credit.
Amendment.
There's, I have confidence in that, so.
Yeah.
But we can follow up and still approve, couldn't we?
Yeah. Then we're good.
Call to question.
Okay, all in favor? Any further discussion?
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
No manual checks?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, we got minutes.
Four minutes, that's right.
And Chairman Carl Fortner, I apologize, December fifth, I never even looked at, when, uh, when one of my deputies, Tammy Spohn, said, hey, we never approved those, I, I just put them in your packet. So, uh, Chairman Fortner has gone over December fifth, uh, January twenty-third, and, uh, for the staff meeting, and January twenty-third, the town board meeting, and those are in front of you, highlighted in yellow where the changes are.
Right, on December fifth, I did have, um, comments, and then, and then I think there were further changes.
Right.
I think your staff or you went through and added some more.
And Lorraine's report wasn't even there, it's like, oh, but it's in there now.
I noticed that, I, I felt so slighted.
But it's in there now, Lorraine, I mean Supervisor Dashik.
Um, so we could, what are we, what's on, December fifth, we're starting on, and there were, there were, uh, quite a few changes as opposed to the other ones, so I don't know if everybody got through there. The only ones I saw under my town board, board report, um, and I did make some changes there. One change wasn't picked up when I said, encourage residents to watch the web, website for constitutions updates. I don't know if that's continuing updates, or just strike the word.
To be continued.
Continuing, continuing updates?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Constitutions?
Continuing updates?
She had a hard time reading your writing.
Yeah, okay. I was just gonna delete the word and just say, "Website for updates," you know? Let's do it that way.
Okay, let's do it that way.
So we'll just delete that word.
Got that.
Uh, sanitary district, tax incremental district, maybe, can you add the word finance in there? Tax incremental finance district. I hope everybody else read their comments. Not that I don't listen to them carefully, uh, but the best person to review those is the person who set them. But otherwise, I, I think they were all picked up of the ones that I saw anyway. This is December 5th. So with those two corrections, I'll make a, unless someone's got some more, I'll make a motion to approve the December 5th, uh, 2019 town, Vernon Town Board Minutes.
Second.
As corrected. Second by Supervisor Mahalik. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now go to, um, Town Board and Staff Meeting, um, January 23rd. And, um, I think I just had, I just have one slight thing there on DPW directors about Center and Skyline, I think. So, um, and otherwise, just some typos.
Did she fix it?
Yeah, she fixed the typos.
Okay.
Staff meeting, we're on.
I know, I, I apologize to the board, but there was one, uh, sentence in there where it just said, uh, Carl, in, in the minutes. Did you guys catch that in all of your stuff?
Yeah, yes.
That's in the...
That's fine, don't worry about it. If you did, you did.
Chairman Carl.
Chairman Carl, yeah, we did catch that one.
Thank you, I just...
Yep, that's in our, that's in the regular board meeting on the 23rd, what you're thinking of. We're getting there.
Okay.
We'll, uh, we're on the, uh, staff meeting, January 23rd.
Right, thank you.
Any, any further discussion?
Sorry, is, uh, is that, uh, unapproved proceedings?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, then I'd like to make a, you know, there's a little humor and everything, right? Uh, on page three of January 23rd, 2020, unapproved, I'm having a lot of trouble, or some people in this office are having a lot of trouble. I'm not offended by my first name.
Oh, did you find it?
Under J.
J?
J, J, J. I don't see a J.
Oops, January 23rd, 2020, unapproved.
We're on January 23rd, Town Board and Staff Meeting.
Oh, staff meeting, withdraw. Withdraw, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of the Vernon Town Board of Supervisors and Staff Meeting, January 23rd, 2020.
Who made that?
Fred made it, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. Now we are on January 23rd, regular Town Board meet, uh, minute, our minutes, sorry.
I'm now empowered to talk about page...
Three, letter J.
Letter J, and...
Can I spell your name, Ron?
Seconded by Supervisor Jeff Mahalik.
Oh.
I have gone by so many different names on this board that if you wanna just go, if it's easier to go with just initials or just call it Supervisor Number Three.
Well, that's the only place it's wrong. You're a lot, you're in here a lot, Fred.
I don't care. I don't wanna be, okay, but everybody sits here, so I wanna keep it moving. But I, I'm not offended, but I find it humorous. So if, I'm sorry that Supervisor Millies is not here, but he and I are wrestling for something.
So who was it?
It was Fred Mahalik.
It was me. They got the last name.
Okay, so we have that correction on the minutes?
But it does show to the residents that people here on this board read minutes. Especially the chairman.
Yep, oh my God.
And some of the supervisors too.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, and this, yep, you got the, uh, motion on the last page, Chairman Carl, okay? Any other?
That's where it is, thank you.
Yep, any other, uh...
Did you see, you caught it?
Yeah, yeah.
I just saw it.
It's on there.
My paperclip fell off.
Yeah, it's on, it's in there.
Okay.
I'm highlighted.
More ways than one.
I know, it's close to 10:30.
I told my wife I'd be home at 8:30, 9:00.
Well, we, we, we had a very important vicious dog to take care of.
And you made a decision on the first line.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, to approve the minutes of the Vernon Town Board of Supervisors, uh, Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, as corrected.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Item 11, I, item 11.
Bill's gonna have to wait, Fred.
Item 11, next town, next town meetings, I'll read them. Town Board Meeting. I don't know what the next one is, February 6th is on this agenda. It's today, the next one is February 20th. And, uh, at 6:30, Town Hall Plan Commission, that's, uh, just Plan Commission. Go board, February 12th at six, uh, uh, 6:30 at the Vernon Town Hall. Then we have, as announced earlier, DOA, Department of Administration Public hearing for a cooperative border agreement with the town of Waukesha, town of Vernon, at the town of Waukesha Town Hall, February 13th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So those are our next, uh, Town Board meetings. Public comments, there's no public left. And, um, and now I will call for Supervisor Mahalik.
Before I do that pending motion, I want to compliment you on this last part where you go through and identify all the dates of upcoming meetings.
Well, we've been doing that for...
Who put that together, but that's a great idea, so thank you. Who is it?
We've been doing it for a while.
The both of you guys? Well, compliments to you. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Jury, Lorraine.
Second. I fell asleep, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, 10:26. Thank you, everyone.